Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's Wednesday, March 6th, and this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Wareham School Committee. We'll begin the agenda with public participation. Is there anybody here who would like to address the committee? Welcome.
You've got pizza there, Mrs. B?
Appreciation.
Could you do me a favor? I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we'd love to know who's addressing us.
Oh, Sarah Gallagher.
Thank you, Sarah.
Part of the Wareham Middle School.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi. As part of our Wareham Middle School Week of Appreciation, we wanted to thank you guys for all the work that you do. With just a small little gift, just saying thank you. We've honored each one of the part of the school committee. Each day of the week, we've done teachers, custodians, everything, so we just wanted to thank you, thank you to you guys.
Thank you for saying thank you.
And she has a little token to give each one of you.
Mr. Fonce is on his way. He texted us.
And make sure Dr. Sylvia doesn't take his.
Well, thank you.
No, 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 I already had one. I already had one, so we'll...
That is so nice.
Thank you very much. Wow, very impressive.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Dr. Rabinevich will interpret this for us.
That's right. It's the year of the snake, and that is good luck, because it's red and gold.
And Vegas is full of that.
That is correct.
We can use all the luck and the appreciation we can get. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate what you've done.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the committee?
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Do you have goodies? Then, nope, tonight's public participation with goodies only.
You're not supposed to follow pets or wonderful students, so I think you're, it's a tough act.
It is. I spend all day with wonderful students. I'm used to it. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't bring anything. My name is Brian Fitzgerald. I'm a fifth grade teacher at Deccus Humanities. Soon to be a fifth grade teacher at the middle school, I guess. And I'm also president of the Wareham Education Association. And I feel bad I didn't bring anything. I will next time. Other than problems. There's something that you may know that happens in this building, or may not. There's a wonderful feat of alchemy that takes place in this building. There's an educator. And I didn't decide until last night that I was going to talk about this person, so I'm going to try to avoid using gender-specific language. I'm not going to use the person's name, because I didn't talk to this person ahead of time. What this teacher does, it's amazing, is students who walk into this person's room in September as non-readers, as people who hate reading, leave in June as readers, hooked on a series, or an author, or a genre. And it's not just a matter of this person putting resources into building a wide range of books. This person actually reads the books. They're almost a literacy meshugana. They find the right books, they find the right people, and this educator matches them up. And the few times I've been trusted to be on a panel, I've always thought it's funny. They always put together a sign with a slogan or a name for the panel, and then the sign's either up on the wall behind or on the tables in front, so everybody except the people on the panel can see the sign. And I always thought that was funny. And I mention all this, because I know you're headed, we're all heading to a tough budget season. It would be foolish to pretend otherwise. But I felt that I wanted to make sure that, that it was said at some point. When we talk about, it's all about the learning. The learning happens where the educator and the student are in the same room, having the same conversation. And I don't have a high-production video of a fake meeting to show you. I don't have any brochures or binders to give you. I have an invitation. I'm in room E9 at Deccus. Keep walking till you feel like you're almost in Marion, and you will be there. And you will, all of you are welcome to come by at any time. But I wanted to make sure to say that when we talk about the learning, it happens in these buildings. Not because of any brochures, or computer programs, or binders, or PowerPoints. With no disrespect meant to the people who deal with that. It happens when the child and the adult are having the same conversation. In Wareham Middle School, and the other six buildings of this district, where the children walk in in the morning and walk out in the afternoon. I felt that had to be said. You have a lot of tough choices ahead of you. You're not getting rid of unimportant stuff. There's no unimportant stuff left in your budget. It's choosing between important things. And if it's all about the learning, I think the important thing is those educators and those children working together to make that learning happen. And I did feel the need to say that today, and I do thank you for listening to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good news. Anybody have any good news they'd like to share?
Vikings. The Vikings is great news. We're going to the South Sectional Finals again, so let's get out there and support our basketball team.
Even if there was a little blood on the court.
They're doing, they're doing just tremendously well, and I couldn't be prouder of our, our kids, the way they're representing it. And also our students, the way they represent our system. They're out there enthusiastic, and, and it's just, it's just a lot of fun. And this time of year, it just brings much-needed pride to our, to our system. And so, kudos to the basketball players, kudos to the teaching staff, and the coaching staff, and, and kudos to the fans that support the kids on a regular basis. So, if you haven't supported the team, and you haven't seen a game yet, it's UMass-Boston on Saturday morning. Get there, because I'm sure you'll be very entertained, because we, we play Martha's Vineyard again. So, I'm excited about it, and I think it's a point of pride for our district, so I'm real happy about it.
Yes, Mr. Flaherty.
Yeah, I, um, last week, I, just by chance, was going to Red Robin with my family, and, and my, my son was with, with me, and he said, "What, is it like Army Day or something?" And he looked in, and it was the JROTC that sort of took it over, and it was a big fundraiser. And, and they, they did a hell of a job. I've been, I've been to a bunch of those, you know, whether, whether it's Papaginos, or Red Robin, or Cozy, where they give a certain percentage during a certain hour, you know, hours to the, to the cause. And this was the, the best run one I've ever been to. I mean, they really took it to heart. They really, they were opening the doors. They were, they were, you think that they worked there. And they did a hell of a job.
I'm not surprised that the best run was the JROTC. Any other good news?
I have one piece.
Yes?
Last night, I was finally, I was so excited. I was finally able to take a class at our parent cafe that is being put on by the Wareham, the Beyond School Time program. That is a new resource here in the community this year. And I am so glad that I attended. I can now provide this committee, as well as to the people at home, a firsthand account about what an amazing resource this is in our community and to our kids. Last night, my son and I took yoga, and the room was packed. So, the only criticism I would have is make it happen weekly, and have it, do it in the gym, so more parents can participate, but it was, it was great. It's not just the classes that happen there. It really is a sense of, of community when you go in there. It's parents meeting parents. There's, there is such a feeling of just wanting to talk to each other, and find out about each other's kids, and meeting new friends for the first time. There was actually a parent there that doesn't have her child here in the Wareham school system, but still came to take part of this resource. In addition to the classes, what happens is, is that they use it as an opportunity to have the kids play, spend time there. They have couches there. And then also to provide materials from the class that was taught, so that you can continue the learning at home. The last thing is that they're using it to do other services that are available here in Wareham, like the literacy program, so they had free books. And my son reads the Magic, Magic, oh, what's his? Thank you, Magic Treehouse. And we've been, we could, we could not find series, the book number three. We had one and two, and we had five and six, and we could not. We found three last night. It's the most exciting. He was excited about it, so, I mean, I couldn't believe that, that that, he was, how excited he was about that. But what I want to let everybody know is that this is something that is free of charge, something that you should take advantage of. And really, just even talking with Mrs. Manning, and the programs that are going on, and making suggestions, they are open to making this the most successful Beyond School Time program that, that exists. And so, I just encourage you to stay involved. And what I promised is that every, every two weeks, I'm going to come here, and I'm just going to promote another, as another way, all the different classes that they have going on there. So, the next program, they actually have one tonight, which is on memoir writing. So, parents can go and learn about how to write their memoir, and, and the kids then are doing some sort of project on the side. On the, it was supposed to be tomorrow, but with the snow, they postponed it until the 12th. There's going to be Financial Literacy, Couponing Part Two. And if anybody watches that show, Couponing, it, there is an art to it. And so, here's a place that you can learn about couponing. So, again, parents, you can go, you can learn about couponing, and then your kids, they'll have an activity for your kids also. On Tuesday, Thursday, March 14th, they have Mosaic Madness, so your kids can learn how to do mosaics. And then, on the 30th, there is a book club night for parents. Last night, they were promoting the book. It is called Buddy: How a Rooster Made Me a Family Man. I guess it's hilarious. And what they do is they provide the book to you free of charge, and then, just as long as you, as a parent, read the book, and then come back and discuss it with other parents. So, those are just three of the parent cafes that are going on right now. But these are flyers that are being sent in backpacks, and you can find it on Facebook page, so please like their Facebook page. And the only last plug that I'll do is really walking in there, the stories that you feel of people that have been there, or people that are about to go in there, you just feel it. And so, one thing that I'd like to encourage is, one of our newspapers to maybe do an exposé, or some sort of story on this resource, because there are so many different services that they provide here. And parents really need to understand what it's all about, so then they take advantage of it.
I'm sure the reporters in the audience will take due note.
Two-page exposé, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fonce, you're in time for good news. Anything you'd like to share?
Yeah, I'm here. Not at this time, I'm also.
Cindy, what's happening at the high schools?
So, Decca will be leaving for their state's competition next week.
You expect them to do wonderfully well?
Yes, everybody seems very well-prepared, and everybody seems pumped up for it. It will be the 14th, 15th, and the 16th. Drama will be hosting their play tomorrow night, Friday, and they have a competition on Saturday. The book club has chosen their book. It's Night Circus. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The only thing I'd like to add is I, as often as I can without becoming an intrusion, like to go to school council meetings. And I don't think they get enough credit, especially the parents that take the time out of their lives to come and join what are always thoughtful, interesting, and informative discussions about how to make the schools a better place for their, for their children and our students. So, just a, a thank you to all of those people out there in TV land, or if you happen to be here in the audience, for, for that level of commitment to the, to the town and to the district. It's, it's very much appreciated. I'll move on to the minutes. I want to hold off at Mr. Flaherty's request, discussing the minutes of February 27th, but there are two sets of minutes regarding February 13th. One was a joint meeting with the finance committee. If you've had a chance to look at the one related to the finance committee, I will take any comments, suggestions, or otherwise a motion to approve. Mike?
Regarding the, the finance committee minutes, I thought, I thought it would read better if we had, we had the, if we had the items discussed, itemized, similar to how that handle was, that...
Bulleted?
Bulleted, yeah.
So, it's a formatting issue?
So, yeah, just line by line, so you can look at it and see, this is what was proposed. It would just read better.
Fair enough. I'll let you discuss that with Michelle, but, but as long as you're not editing the content, then I don't think we need to worry about it.
No, she wouldn't let me do that.
And they were, and they were, let's not blame Michelle. They were my notes. Since Michelle had to be here getting ready for our seven o'clock meeting, those are my notes from that meeting.
Well, we were lucky they were good, good notes.
Other than that.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
4-0-1. And then, we walked across the parking lot to have our regularly meet, regularly scheduled meeting here on the same date of February 13th. Any comments or suggestions regarding this set of minutes? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
4-0-1.
And we're holding off on the 27th, you said?
Yes, we'll come back to it later in the meeting. Mr. Palladino.
Ian Company.
I was about to say, you, it looks like you need a lot of help. Welcome. You're on the sidelines. Moral support. Well, that's great. If you could, if you could just introduce yourselves, and we'd be happy to hear what you've got to say.
These are all members of the junior class.
One more time, please. Sorry.
Hi, I'm Melancho Pina.
I'm Emily Bakayaki.
I'm Mackenzie Connel.
These are all members of the junior class. I'm Stephanie Santos, the class advisor.
Maja Rakowski, the trip coordinator.
Thank you.
So, we're here, we'd like to request approval of senior privileges for the class of 2014, for the start of the 2013, 2014 school year. Seniors must meet the 95% attendance expectation, maintain a clean discipline record, including parking privileges, have a GPA that is an 80 overall, and they can not have any Ds or Fs in their current classes. Be debt-free, and have parental approval.
Committee, comments, questions?
Is this the same as the previous class? No changes to it?
No changes.
No changes?
How do you feel about senior privileges, now that you're about to become seniors?
I believe that they are a benefit and an advantage to the senior class.
A benefit and an advantage to the class?
In what ways?
To us, to a student, to, they're just extra time to get, maybe get some extra preparation in, the classes. Seniors tend to have a strong load of classes for their last year, so...
Do you see any downside in having them?
No.
So, if I asked you to take the, the con side, and your, your colleague there to take the pro side, and you were forced to debate this issue, you couldn't think of a single negative thing to say as part of a debate club activity?
No, sir.
We, in the past, made the decision to increase the GPA. Can you tell us what kind of impact that has had in terms of the number of students that actually obtain privileges? And can you also tell us whether, what number of students tend to lose those privileges during the course of the senior year?
I'm, I'm not sure if juniors would have that information, but I can honestly tell you, you could probably count on one hand the number of students that lose them, because every, every term, we go through, it's usually a GPA issue. We go through the grade point average every term. But I don't, I don't think the juniors would have a pulse on how many kids lose it versus how many kids have it. But I can tell you, it, it is not a headache for administration. Most of the seniors, as Emily alluded to, take some hard, tough courses, AP-type courses. And if you come in the library during any period, you'll see a handful of the kids that actually stay in the building and use that time, because they're so involved in the extracurricular activities, to take care of their studies, or some of their studies.
Do you think the criteria associated with earning the privileges is fair? I'll take a motion to approve, if people are so inclined.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstained? 5-0-0.
I would like to request approval for the class of 2014 Senior Prom to be held at the Putnam Lounge at Gillette Stadium on Saturday, May 17th, 2014, from 6:00 to 11:00 p.m. The cost will be $65 per, per person, which is the same as the last few graduating classes. Since the junior classes chose to opt out of their junior prom, we want to make the senior prom special.
Questions? Yes?
Can you tell me why did the junior class opt to do away with junior prom?
Junior prom is expensive. All proms are expensive, but... We are planning a senior trip, so we chose to shift maybe more of our fundraising and funds to our senior class trip.
And Gillette Stadium, is this the farthest that you guys have gone for a prom?
Actually, the senior class this year is traveling to Foxborough as well for their prom.
Okay.
Any other questions? So, the decision was because they have the most wonderful venue, because they're most cost-effective? How did they, how did they get your business?
All of the above, essentially. We came, we came up with a couple of choices, ranging from other locations around, and we have centered on Gillette Stadium.
Any other questions? I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second? Oh, I guess you can't have a prom, there's no second.
Second.
Is that where the Patriots play?
I think there's a football team associated with Gillette Stadium, yes. I realize basketball people sometimes can't handle multiple sports, but... Did I hear a second from Dr. Sylvia?
Yes.
Yes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? 5-0-0. Have a wonderful prom.
I would also like to request approval for the Universal Studios Grad Bash 2014 trip as per attached.
Questions from the committee?
Question?
Yes?
Is, how many students would this affect? Is there a cap on how many can go?
Nope. There's no, there's no cap. Anyone can go. They have to have, we have the criteria like I've done. This is the fourth time I've taken kids down to Florida. They can't have any suspensions, attendance, problems, grade problems, or anything like that. Every student will be allowed to go, as long as they meet the criteria. And we have multiple fundraising going on also, for the kids that, you know, really, the parents are having a hard time. So, we'll do the fundraising and stuff, so there shouldn't be any child that would be left behind if they want to go. And like I said, this is the fourth time I've done it, and I feel comfortable with this.
Thank you. You answered my next question, as Chair Swett always brings up the concern of the children that are struggling financially, that want to go and meet all the criteria. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to know who, the chaperones, and who would be going.
Carl Baptiste.
Oh, he's a cop.
Really? Cliffy, I'll see you after.
Isn't that going to put a dampener on people's ability to have fun?
I'm only teasing.
No, because the first time, two times that we had gone down there, Dennis DeMotta was our school resource officer, and he went with us.
Go ahead, Maja, I'm sorry.
Thank you. You know how nervous I get? I'm too nuclear. Okay, wait a minute, now I have to read. Carl Baptiste, he's the school resource officer. Steve Rumbold, he's the class dean.
And the athletic director.
Okay. Ms. Santos, Ms. Salerno, myself, and my husband are the chaperones right now. If, you have to have 10 per chaperone. If we have any more, that, any more students that would like to go, we have other chaperones that are willing to kick in. I have no problem. But the two of you are going to need a chaperone. You both need chaperones.
Duly noted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Rakowski.
Thank you, sir.
What's the anticipated total cost for the trip? Excluding miscellaneous expenses?
Around $850. That covers everything, except for the meals, because like we did it in Disney before, we give them one cost, and that's your plane, your hotel, your tickets, all that stuff. We let them buy their own meals. If they want the meal tickets, that's fine. But you'll have some kids that don't eat breakfast, some kids that won't eat lunch. So, you don't want to make them buy three meal tickets per day. You know, we're doing this so, to lowest cost possible.
Any other questions?
Can you, can you explain grad bash? So, I mean, that, that there's a day to relax, and then you're going to grad bash. What is, is that, is that something that is just going to be for Wareham students?
No. Seniors of the United States. Just like Disney had Grad Night, they had, Disney doesn't do Grad Night anymore. That's why we're going to the Grad Bash at Universal. And it's for any seniors of the United States. They can go there, and they have a pre-party first, and the park is all closed down. It shuts down just for the seniors. And if I have this right, the Grad Bash starts at 8:00 at night, and this one, I think, ends at 2:00 in the morning. So, they can ride the rides until 2:00 in the morning. Disney had it till 5:00 in the morning, let me tell you. About 2:30, 3:00 o'clock, Maja was feeling it.
I bet.
But they have, and like I said, they have the pre-party, which is, you know, they open up a certain, like, say, hot rock cafe and that stuff, but it's only for the seniors. There's no adults or any of that stuff. It's just where the kids can go, where the adults used to be able to go. And then, at 8:00 o'clock, they head over into Universal for just the thing that, it's all secured. Nobody can get in or out. And even the chaperones, you can't leave. You know, and we have the chaperones, when you're in the park, the chaperones have walkie-talkies, our cell phones they have now. Back in Disney, they had like little beeper things, but now they have cell phones that they give you, and so they can get ahold of you if you have any problems. And like I said, this is my fourth time doing it. I've never had a problem down there.
Do they go this year?
Excuse me?
Are they, are they going this year?
No.
Okay.
We did it 2000, 2002, 2010, and then it'll be 2014.
Okay.
I'll take a motion.
I do have one more question, but unless I'm missing it, Maja, on the agenda, it just says Thursday, 2014, Friday. What month is this? Unless I missed it, the itinerary doesn't show that.
Did I not put it on there? It's, it's the first weekend of May, Kenny. I thought I put it on there.
First weekend of May?
Of May, yes.
Well, the first week, because it's Thursday and Friday. So, they're missing two days of school.
Yeah. But we also did that with the Disney, because you do, you can put educational into this. Because, you know, like, SeaWorld with the biology, Universal, Harry Potter with the English. You know, you can, you can add it in there, and we've done, like I said, we've done that before. So, you have the two days for the kids. I can't give you exact dates, because they haven't given me exact dates. I can just go with the...
You're shooting for the first week of May, 2014, that Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Yeah, but I don't think it's the 14th. I think it's, I don't know, it's close. I don't know, I don't, like I said, I don't know... I don't know, I don't, like I said, I don't know the exact date, but it's the first weekend of that, that month.
Any other questions or concerns?
No.
I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Mr. Chairman? Thank you, and don't do anything that Dr. Sylvia wouldn't do.
You know, this is a, probably I'm overstepping my bounds, but this is a perfect time to point out, not only to the committee, but to the folks that are here in attendance, and also to the folks that may be home, the dedication and family atmosphere that exists in Wareham Public Schools. And as you all know, I've been fully at Wareham Public Schools for an awful long time. And sometimes we've got these unsung heroes. And I gotta honestly admit that Marge Drakowski is one of these unsung heroes. Marge has been a teacher assistant in our district for an awful long time, and her commitment to these kids is just absolutely amazing. And there's a lot of stories in our district about people that have dedicated almost their adult lives to the children of Wareham. And I think Marge Drakowski is, could be a poster woman for, for this kind of family attitude and a dedication to our young people. So I, for one, would like to thank Marge for everything she's done for these young kids, because she, she has worked over and above in so many different areas. Thank you, Marge.
She's still not going.
Can I go now?
No. Still love you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Michelle, strike that last quote.
I forgot to bring up one thing for good news. Can I, can I just say?
Of course.
It's for my granddaughter Brianna. I, she cannot thank Cliffy's daughter Cindy and Henry St. Julian enough. She's a sophomore at Bentley with their help, and she has emailed them numerous times to tell them how much everything she learned from them is helping her there. She's a sophomore, she just made the dean's list, and we just got, she just got notification that she's been accepted to the London School of Economics for the summer semester, and in September, for the fall semester, she's been accepted as an exchange student in Australia. And to this day, she calls them, she called, she, she called Mr. St. Julian before I knew that she made it to the London School of Economics. But it just goes to show, because he used to come back at night and help these kids, and Cindy, I think she sleeps there. But I mean, these are two teachers that have made a huge difference in my granddaughter's life, and I just want you people to know how lucky you are to have those two. Thank you so much.
Congratulations to your granddaughter as well.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks for being here.
It's not often, you could bet a thousand.
Next item on our, on our agenda is a report on the Massachusetts Common Core as it relates to Wareham students, specifically the high school.
Did we miss something?
Point about, Mr. Chair.
Oh.
Are we going to add any information on the Course of Studies?
Good point. It says informational.
Yeah, but...
The question is, Mr. Palladino, excuse me, the Course of Studies for 2013, 14?
I'll leave it, I was just going to see you, Mike.
Okay. It says informational. Did you, did you want to?
Just reading for the next meeting.
Just reading for the next meeting?
I will present at the next meeting.
But, the only problem I'm having with it, I don't know on the, the changes are highlighted, is that correct?
In your next packet, I know you like a little cheat sheet with all the changes.
I do.
I'll have it to you on a page or a page and a half on the changes, because that's what I'm going to go by as well in my presentation.
Okay. So, so we really don't know if these are additions, deletions, omissions?
It could be highlighted.
Yeah, we don't know what the highlight means, though.
Right, right.
Unless we dig out the last year's packet.
Right. All the changes for you, what was changed, added, deleted, et cetera.
Okay.
Correct? That's just a...
So it's kind of hard to, to understand it if we don't know exactly what the changes are. You know, we see it highlighted.
Right.
But is that an addition, a deletion, or, you know what I'm saying?
Right. Most of them are additions, but absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No problem.
Mike?
Actually, just a question sort of related. Does the, does the middle school have a document similar to that?
No.
No. Why not?
Just never has. The curriculum has been changing, and the high school has always had something like this, so it's...
Is it had to do?
Not necessarily.
Jim, would you go to the mic if you want to speak, please?
The, in, the difference between the middle school Course of Studies and the high school Course of Studies is in the high school, students have choices. So the Course of Studies includes the whole array of course, of course offerings. In the middle school, the students all virtually take the same courses. Now, we are looking at changing that, and I don't want to get into too much detail because it's not on tonight's agenda, but we, in fact, I just had a meeting yesterday with Mr. Palladino and Mrs. Freitas at the high school. We have a team of middle and high school teachers that are working together in planning a STEM Academy that would begin in 7th grade and build into a high school STEM Academy. We're hoping for 9th grade as early as September of 2014, or a year from now. UMass Dartmouth is our partnering higher ed. I'll have more details for you and a full presentation. Then when we go to that, you will have students at the middle school possibly having choices, either being on a team with the STEM Academy or not. But at this point, the courses are virtually the same for all students. And those, those lists of courses by grade are on the middle school website.
So is there no differentiation between, is there no honors classes?
In 7th and 8th grade, there is accelerated math.
That's it?
Those are the only two honors courses at this point in the middle school. That is one of the reasons we're looking at STEM Academy.
Okay.
We have spent the last two years training teachers in pre-AP, but you, that, as far as, middle school does not traditionally across the state have honors tracks in the same way as the high school does. The idea is to give the children time to mature and learn to excel as they, as they mature.
You all set, Mike?
Yeah, yeah.
But if I may, we have cut programs at the middle school.
Oh.
We had experiential programs, art programs, music programs that no longer exist.
Absolutely. We have cut virtually every elective program that we possibly could and still have the students supervised.
That, that...
By cutting staff.
Right.
Absolutely. And that's why there's no choices. You're absolutely right, Dr. Sylvia.
Thank you.
But everything you mentioned that was cut, it's not academic, right?
No, the core exists. I mean, we're bound by law to have the core.
No.
But we had experiential education, we had artistic education, we had music, we had lang, foreign language education. We had, we had a very, very good dynamic, we had career education back when I worked in Wareham. So we had electives in industrial arts, woodworking, cooking.
Yeah, yeah.
So all of that, as a matter of fact, we built a high school with it without any of those labs in existence. I mean, a middle school. So...
So maybe I can help. So next Thursday, Mike, you're going to come to a meeting that I invited you to on that screening committee.
Yes.
I think a question about that kind of programming would be quite appropriate to ask any of the people we determined to interview.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, I, yes, right. The other thing I was going to mention is it, we really do need to cut off the conversation on this, but I suspect we'll be coming back to this on April 10th for a different reason, and I'll get into that later in the meeting.
Yes.
Your honor, thank you.
Before I begin, I'm just going to pass out some papers for a backup.
Do you want this up on the screen?
No, sir. That's for the district review.
Okay.
This, we have a two-part tonight. The reason I did paper, and I apologize to the TV camera, is that it did not come through correctly when it was, when they were attachments. One might have, and others did not, so... And there's additional information.
I'm going to be relatively brief and save time for questions. The first page you're looking at, and this is the page that was included in your packet that Michelle emailed, is the Mass Core Course of Studies. This matrix outlines for you what is the Mass Core, and it provides an overview of the recommended Course of Studies. Very simply, the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education proposed a recommended Course of Studies to standardize high school education across the Commonwealth. Believe it or not, there had not been in Massachusetts either a required or recommended Course of Studies for high school graduation. The only requirement was passing MCAS in, before you graduated. And that was only put in place in the 90s. So this was brand new. Now, the Board of Education approved this in 2007. It was publicized in 2008 to be effective with the class of 2010. And the state immediately started gathering data. Training was given. I started attending seminars on what is the Mass Core and what's the difference between the different requirements versus recommendations, and what on this Mass Core of Studies is actually required. The only item on the Mass Core of Studies required by Massachusetts general law is physical education. A physical education, including health education, is required by Mass general law to be taught annually. That does not mean it's a year-long course for students. Rather, it means students need a course in physical education, including health education, at least once a year. It can be a semester, it can be any portion of that year. So this Mass Core of Studies came out. We began publicizing it here in this district in 2008. I met with faculty at the high school during faculty meetings, met with then-principal Clark, met with, Mrs. Freitas and I, met with the guidance department so that everyone would be aware of the Mass Core of Studies. So that is how it is in place, and the students are recommended to take this series of courses. That includes four English Language Arts, four math, and a unit is a full year. Three lab-based science classes, two history/social science, two foreign language of the same foreign language. As I said, physical ed including health at some point every year.
Jan, it says three.
Three foreign language?
No, history/social science.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I say two?
Yes.
Excuse me. I should have put my glasses on. Three, history/social science. Thank you, Dr. Sylvia. One art and five units, or one year of the arts. That would be music or fine arts or graphic arts. And then five units or five year-long courses or equal to a year-long of additional courses of studies, as well as additional learning opportunities. And they're delineated there. This is right off the department's website. The one problem that has been widely discussed is the reporting of how many of our students graduate in the Mass Core. And if you flip over the cover page, you will see a graphic done in color, thanks to my secretary, who very sparingly uses the color printer, but wanted to do to give you the different colors of our record of Mass Core graduates and surrounding towns. Now, I want to preface this with a couple of things. First of all, this includes all graduates who are Wareham residents. So these aren't just Wareham High School graduates. These may be graduates from a special education facility, they could be graduates of not charter or choice, but these would be graduates of different schools, not just Wareham High School. The percentages are a little bit different, and I'll share that with you. You will see there's a huge disparity from year to year. They look like roller coaster rides or zigzags, or however best you want to describe it, and I'm not sure there is a good description. And this is because of reporting errors. I have spent a number of phone calls, meetings, and long consultations with two gentlemen who work with this all the time in the Department of Education. And that is Mr. Niall Fuentes, who is the Director of College and Career Readiness, and his supervisor, Mr. Keith Westridge. They are quite dismayed, because they said they cannot rely on these statistics. So what they have put into place is a checks and balances known as EPUMs, where we have to report all courses that are offered, and who's assigned to those courses to teach and to participate, so both students and teachers. Because of that, Mr. Fuentes is sure that they will have a checks and balance in two years, because they will have four years of data. In the meantime, they're relying on secretaries who have entered the data. For example, if you look at our data in 2008, it was just above 30%, which was probably fairly accurate, because if my memory serves me right, Mrs. Freitas went through the transcripts in 2008 and came up with that figure. In 2009, we had a situation where when the data was due, a substitute secretary was there, and she assumed that anyone who passed MCAS passed the Mass Core, and so she entered the data that way.
Jen, can I interrupt you? I just want to make sure I fully understand what you're saying. So you're saying that in 2008, a little over 30% of the students graduated with 4, 4, 3, 3, 2, 1, 5 units of coursework?
Yes. Now, remember, that's the first year that this idea was even proposed.
Understood.
Yes.
Understood. That's exactly what it means, and those students may or may not have graduated from Wareham High School.
Correct. The largest majority would have.
Right.
But then it does include others that did, went, were in other placements outside the district.
Give me an example of someone who was a Wareham resident, but would be included, but didn't go to Wareham High School, but would be included in these data.
An out-of-district special education placement.
Any regular education examples?
It would not have included any regular education examples if they were in a school, a public or private school that reported its own data.
So special education, out-of-district, is about the only example you can think of?
At this point, now, it would also have included Wareham cooperative students, and then later on in the years, Wareham academy students. But not Wareham high school stu, but, as well as Wareham high school students.
Fair enough. Thank you, continue.
Okay. So we had a problem in 2009, when the Department of Ed reported to me the 100%, I immediately investigated. It was, but they said, well, we're reporting it to you, but it's too late to be corrected. After that, we put in a system, actually working with the principal at the high school, where administration would review the data. In 2011, there's a huge drop, and that is where there was a misunderstanding, and the person reviewing the data thought there had to be a full year of physical education. So the numbers look very low.
Is there no data point for Wareham for 2010?
The, no, there is not.
Okay.
Not that I could find. I mean, we've, if you look on the back of this page, you will see through some investigation and distilling various data in the computer that we have given you the numbers. So in 2010, it is estimated that of the 2009 Wareham graduates, 53% were Mass Core of the Wareham, so of the students from Wareham, not just Wareham High School. Then, as of 2011, we, we had this second issue. So we're continuing to review it. Every year where this has been misreported, I have gone, and Mr. Palladino and I and Mrs. Freitas have met with the guidance department to go over the requirements of Mass Core and their need to encourage students to fulfill this recommended Course of Studies and to report it so accurately. In 2012, the percentage is approximately 35% overall, but for Wareham High School graduates, it is 41.9.
And is that accurate?
That is accurate. I can assure you that in 2012, it is as accurate as we could possibly be, and I know Mr. Palladino sat, stayed here too, because he has, I think it's fair to say, by hand, gone through every single... say, by hand, gone through every single transcript to make sure that what is being reported is being done so accurately.
So, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, basically, if I look at 2008 to 2012, we've only really gone up two percentage points. Because you said that 2008, you're fairly certain that that's accurate, and then 2012, fairly accurate that that number's correct. So, in four years, five years, we've only gone up 2%?
Overall, we've gone up more than that for Wareham High School graduates. We're up to almost 42%. It is still abysmal. I will tell you that it is a rigorous course of studies, where our students need to be encouraged to take that course of studies. And...
But isn't it going to be mandated for graduation?
No. The state is not mandating it. They are only recommending it.
But, we can mandate it?
I think we have.
For graduation requirement?
We have.
It is mandated.
We have. If you remember that, if you, and I'm going back a few years, and Dr. Sylvia, maybe you can add some details here. Mr. Palladino and Mrs. Freitas have presented a increasing requirement for the number of credits for graduation. And that was specifically designed, and I believe it's been the last three years. Scott?
This is the first year. It's 200.
But I'm, but we phased it in over three years.
Right. Requiring Mr. Niall's credits, five.
Right. So, what we, so, as of this year, it is mandated.
Mr. Palladino, if you're going to participate, which I encourage you to do so, if you could join Mrs. Vitella at the table.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. We literally, the three of us sat down and mapped out how many credits a student would need to fulfill the Mass Core. And because the number of credits required for graduation in Wareham did not meet the Mass Core requirements. So, that has been phased in, and I believe that was presented to the school committee three years ago. And now, as of this graduating class, it, we have the required number of credits that will reflect the Mass Core course of studies. So, it is mandated in Wareham as of the graduating class of 2013.
I think Mike was first.
No, I think Cliff.
No, okay. Cliff, go ahead.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm sorry. Run to her.
I'm sorry, I wasn't done. It's just getting to my actual question.
Go ahead.
Sorry. So, is what you're saying is that we're going to go from 41, and that we're going to see what percentage this year?
This year, or the following year?
The graduating class of this year.
This year.
If it's been mandated for, as a graduation requirement for this year.
It's not mandated for this graduating class.
For 2014.
Correct.
Okay. My brain is coming back.
Correct. But there is an increase, we should see, I estimate we'll be in the 60-some-odd percent range for this year. And obviously, climbing closer to 100 for the following year, in the class 2014.
Remember, there are exceptions. And if you go through all of the fine print in the state report forms, you will see that in certain extenuating situations, students are exempted from this requirement.
Yeah, no, I'm just, it's just, it's the 33 to 35.
Oh, it's...
And then, so, okay. So, I'm, I've taken up too much time, so.
You sure?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I just want to clarify this, okay?
Yes.
We've been struggling with this now for several years, and we recognize what we had to do, and we phased this in. We phased the number of graduation requirements, of graduation credits that was required for graduation, over a period of time.
Yes.
Because it was impossible for these kids to make those graduation requirements under the current format that we had available to them. But what I'm doing now, and I'm reading page six of this program of studies that was just given to us, and of course, you have to convert credits to units, but if I, unless I'm mistaken, that we conform 100% to this outline for the 2015 graduating class, 130 graduating credits. Is that correct?
The credits, I don't think are, you know, when you look at 22 units, based on our current units, it's 110.
Right. But of those credits, of those credits, four units need to be in math.
Correct.
Three units have to be in a lab science.
From a requirement standpoint, correct.
Three units have to be in history and social science. Two units have to be in foreign language. Physical education, one unit not, and five units in additional courses.
Yes.
Correct.
So, we are conforming 100% to this outline for the graduating class of 2015. Or 14, actually.
14.
14.
And if you, now, you know, I want to just...
I just need to know that that's accurate.
That is absolutely accurate.
Very accurate.
Thank you.
And just a point of explanation. This was proposed by the department in 2008. It was approved by the Board of Education in '07, but it was not proposed and put out there to the schools until 2008. Whether it's a high school, or a university, or a college, you cannot change the graduation requirements, once a freshman's already there. And for those of you that have college students, you know that they tell your student, whether it's an online course of studies, or a paper book, that some of us got, keep it. Because when you graduate, you came in in 2008. You can only be held to the graduation requirements of 2008. So, a high school's the same way. You can't change the graduation requirements midstream. So, that's why the course requirements have been phased in. And if I remember correctly, when we brought that to school committee, it was extensively discussed. But, I mean, this is why it's been phased in, so that those students coming in each year, they had to face, since 2009, an increase in the number of credits to graduate, so that we will completely conform with the class of 2014, or the class that entered the high school in 2010.
And the other reason it was phased in was because of the new schedule, and the kids that were, are recent graduates, wouldn't have the opportunity to attain 40 credits for each year. So, that was the other reason for phasing it in, amongst many.
Well, it's just, it was a staffing issue as well, was it not?
Staffing, as well.
Mike?
All right. If I heard you correctly, the state came up with this, but they don't require it, but we are requiring it.
You're ac-, yes.
And, what, when you came up with this graph, what made you choose these particular towns to compare?
Because they're surrounding us, and they're comparable. If you go into the, if you, we use surrounding towns and comparable towns. If you go into the Department of Education website, there's a tool called DART.
Yeah, this is, as you know, this is, I brought this to your attention.
Right. Yes, you did.
Because I was using DART.
Oh, okay.
And I saw this. And those graphs I sent you, per each district, were straight out of DART. And they're not the ones, I included Bourne, but I included Caver, which is a surrounding town.
Yes.
And Sandwich, pretty much a surrounding town. And their graph is a straight line of 100%.
Yes.
Now, is that error reporting, or are they just doing things better than we are? Considerably so.
Well, according to both Mr. Fuentes and Mr. Westridge, their rule of thumb at the department is any district that reports either a 0 or 100% is making an error in their reporting. So, they are in the process of auditing those towns. That's, but I mean, I can't say what another town's doing.
I can say what Sandwich is doing.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. I'd love to hear it. I'd love to hear it.
Dr. Sylvia, go ahead.
Sandwich was way ahead of its times, and it wasn't, had nothing to do with me, but they were requiring four years of math, they were requiring two years of a foreign language, they were requiring three years of social studies, and they were requiring three years of a lab science. And they were requiring that way back when, when I was principal. So, that's why they conform.
Okay, no. That makes sense.
And there are a number of schools that have, that have done that. I mean, you can find schools that are at 100% that are reporting accurately, I am sure.
But Mike, we were on a four, we were on a four-by-four block, so the kids were taking eight courses a year.
I think it's very difficult with learning disabilities and individualized education plans to ever get to 100% based on the students' needs, but I think you can get close to it. Specifically, I'm obviously speaking about Wareham High School.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
I must confess, I find the number 100% suspect. For a variety of reasons, including the fact that Sandwich doesn't even have control over all of its students, because of the way this is calculated.
That's correct.
So, I tend, I, this is heresy to say, but I actually tend to agree with Desi in this, in this particular case. And it makes it, never mind. I'll withdraw that comment. Are you all set?
I'm all set.
Cliff, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Well, at the end, I will, but if she wants to continue, I've got a couple of questions about the format.
Fine. Why don't you continue then?
Then, what I provided for the committee is something that I had been asked to put together by the chair, and it so happened that in a meeting yesterday at the high school, I was also asked by the high school administration if I would put together this chart for their Guidance Department, because there's been lots of questions as to what is a Mass Core required subject, what is an elective, and what are other learning opportunities. So, I was very happy to say, "Oh, here it is," and just give them the chart. But this is an ish, this is, this is an outline for, for our use, for our Guidance Department's use, as they look at the course of studies, and for your use, as you look at the course of studies in two weeks, that of the common core, Mass Core required subjects. Now, let me just, this is where things get into, excuse me, Department of Ed lingo. The common core is comprised of those courses that are part of the National Common Core State Standards, or some people refer to as the National Curriculum. The subjects included in the common core are English Language Arts, Literacy, which expands all literature, including literacy integrated into the Social Sciences and Sciences, and Math. Those are the only subjects in the common core right now. We have seen several drafts. Supposedly, science is going to become part of the common core sometime this year, but that is not true yet. Just English Language Arts and Literacy and Mathematics are part of the common core. The Mass Core required subjects are those listed in that matrix on page one. So, I went through the course of studies at the high school and listed the common core and Mass Core required subjects in that first column. The second column is comprised of Mass Core elective courses. If you remember, on page one, there are five units of other elective courses. So, that would be in the second column. Now, if you really dig into all the reading in Mass Core, the department says there should also be a well-rounded education, affording students other experiences beyond the required subjects or the required number of electives. And those other learning opportunities include things like a remedial course, such as our core classes, or SAT prep. It also includes something that was instituted a number of years ago at the high school, I think we're in the third year, and that is Advisory and Literacy. When the students are able to meet in a small group with a faculty member, and they have an opportunity to work on special projects, to have silent reading, and to have a small group experience and identify with an adult. So, those, all of those fall into other learning opportunities. And you will see there are a number of courses in other learning opportunities that don't directly reflect in the units required for graduation, but they're part of the full educational experience. So, this chart, I originally had it marked draft. We've revised it at least once. I'm sure it will go through some other revisions as you work on the course of studies. But at this point, the courses that are currently being taught at the high school fall into these three columns. And that is more for your information than anything else.
Yes.
When I first saw this, I thought, "I'm tucking this one away until my son goes into high school, because this is great. This is my cheat sheet."
Yes.
So, I think my question is around that. How is this communicated to parents? And, you know, when I, when I dive deeper into this, I think that it would be great, and do you provide this today? Do the counselors provide this today, which is broken up by the recommended course of study, and it's broken up by grade, and also by semester?
Correct. So, the Guidance Counselors, after our presentation at the next school committee meeting, will be going around to different classes to talk about the course selection process, the course of studies, and specifically, the students will receive a sheet that's very similar to this in regards to their requirements based on their current grade level. So, it's, that's how it's sent out. The student has to have it signed by the parent. The parent reviews it with the student. Advisory teacher reviews it with the student, and then it goes to the Guidance Counselor.
Because it's kind of like an individual learning plan. So, it's a way that we can create what we've been talking about, which is that individual learning plan for each student. We're just doing it by the recommended course of studies that, or core classes that we have there right now. But this is the recommend, I mean, like college does today, that it says, "Your first year, this is what you should be doing in the major that you've chosen."
Correct.
It's the same thing. If somebody is interested in a particular field, whether it's computer science, or something like that, you can do an individual plan, starting off here, and then breaking it down by class, and then by student.
And as they matriculate to the higher grade levels, there's more flexibility within their schedule to kind of have that major, so to speak.
Just like, yeah. Just like when you get into your senior years. You can add on more electives.
It's very specific towards that.
Okay. So, just to, just to be clear though, so the plan is, as a next step, is that really giving each student, and I'm hoping also somehow getting that out to the parents also, that this is what's recommended for next year?
The parents sign off on it. So, we hope there's that communication piece. But, you know, that's how we do it. And the beauty of what Jan has done is, we're going to try and implement this into our student information system, so that the Guidance Counselors, well, there's actually a new button there, a new icon that's available, that shows the Mass Core piece. So, the Guidance Counselors and the students, when they meet with the Guidance Counselors, will be able to see the courses that they've taken that align to the Mass Core, and what's left to take. So, it's really another filter, so that when we are reporting this data, Jan, Debbie, and myself don't have to sit down in August and go through every single transcript, and use a template that we create to figure out which kids actually graduated under Mass Core. We'll be able to get a true, accurate representation. So, a lot of work was done by Jan on this to help us out over the summer.
Yeah. Wouldn't it be great, I mean, you guys said that came from a technology solution group, and, you know, one of the things with online giving is that it created a very simple, simple system, that when somebody went through and did a donation, it basically encouraged them, subconsciously, consciously, whatever you want to say, "You're doing the wrong thing by only giving me 10 bucks. And really, what you should be giving me is 100 bucks." It'd be great if this same thing can happen, either online or offline, where it is getting them to a place where they're, they have the right individual learning plan to, for success in the next couple of years.
It's funny...
So, anything you guys are doing for that, like, "This is what you're doing, this is what you should be doing."
If they want to give money to the district at the same time, that's okay.
Oh, sure, absolutely. That's funny, you brought it up, Ms. Dean, because, in fact, when Debbie and I were continuing with the conversation yesterday, we actually talked about a graphic, or a chart, that would go to the students and the Guidance Department, so they could check off what they've taken. And then, having that person in my office, who is great at technology, converting it into an online tool, so that they can immediately go in, almost like a, having that cheat sheet to see how many units they've completed, how many more units they need to complete in each of the categories.
Right. And this is the last thing I'll say, because it is, knowledge is key, and, you know, coming from a parent perspective, or even just in business work, like, you all get smarter with the information that I have, and it's, I'm seeing it even with a first grader, how difficult it is to really know all the things that are available to them, and then also what rec, and he's just a first grader, so please, I know, but I'm thinking ahead when he gets into middle school or high school, is that, you know, how can I create a learning environment for him that's the best for him? You know what I mean? So, having, and you guys know that better than anybody else. The counselors know that, the Guidance Counselors know that better than anybody else, being able to see that kid and say, "I see the path for them, and then this is, these are the courses that they should really be taking." And so, whatever, you can get that into the parents' hands also, or there are people that, you know, influence them.
The Guidance Counselors, as I think I've mentioned before, do an interest inventory with all the students, sophomore into junior year, so that they can try and drive them into those different areas that we have these programs in.
Hopefully, the parents are helping guide them too.
All set?
Yes, thank you.
Cliff?
This has probably more to do with the program of studies than the Mass Core. But I did do a little reading on the Mass Core, especially now since I've been working for UMass, and kind of increased my little research. But it was interesting, because unless my interpretation is wrong, the Mass Core says that they have to take in social studies, US history, world history, and any other social study or social science. It doesn't necessarily state that they have to take two units of US history. Am I correct in that assumption?
Yes, you are correct in that assumption. And the reason our students take US History 1 and US History 2... And the reason our students take US History 1 and US History 2 is because, in fact, the very first year I was in the district, so almost nine years ago, there was a combined meeting of the high school social studies department and the social studies teachers at the middle school, and that is the pathway that they chose.
Oh, I understand, I was very argumentative against it at that time, and I'm still against it, but I understand all that.
The idea was that then their US History, MCAS, would not be the same year as English and Math, and that's a moot point.
But since that time, the social studies structure at the middle school has changed.
Yes.
And I think we have to look at it realistically. In fact, I think we have to look at it, um, not only realistically, but developmentally, because if I'm not mistaken, our ninth graders are taking world history, is that correct?
As are our eighth graders.
And they're taking world history in the eighth grade?
They're taking the ancient civilizations, early world history in eighth grade.
And then they're getting.
Part two world history.
French Revolution on?
Yes, in ninth grade.
All right. Because I think it's, I have, I've always thought it's backwards. I, I've always thought developmentally, uh, in, in terms of understanding the interrelationship with world history and world cultures, that they're too young to have world history in the, in those grades, eighth grade and ninth grade, but that's another story. But it also says, but it's very clear though, uh, US history has been taught for years.
Yes.
As a one-year course.
Yes.
And it's very clear, if, unless I'm mistaken, in the mass core, that that social studies requirement can be filled in a variety of different ways.
Absolutely.
And I, I just think that we should take a, a look at that. And I'm not saying that world, I'm not saying that US history's not important, but for eons, going back to the beginning of time, it was taught as a one-year course. World history, you took it as a junior, and you had to pass it, or else you didn't graduate, going way back, you know, back in the hoss and buggy days when I was in high school. So, um, I just think, and again, this is probably something we can discuss in the program of studies, but I wanted to clear that up, that the mass core doesn't specifically say you need two years of, of US history. You know, you could take, uh, you could take law, you could take sociology, you could take psychology, you could take any of the social sciences to satisfy that requirement. That is my understanding.
And, and you're absolutely right, Dr. Sylvia, I'd even throw in anthropology, having taught it at the high school.
Anthropology also, right.
But I think, and I think it's something we have to look at.
I do too.
Quite honestly, and you're gonna hear more about this, um, when Dr. Vvinovich is talking about, and we go into the district review and curriculum review, we have been so consumed with realigning our math and English programs because of the various assessments in math and English curriculum, that, you know, I think we, we need to take a harder look at the social sciences and how, the pathway we're following.
Thank you.
Let's, you know, let's save this.
That's another time. Thank you.
I just have a point of information.
Yes.
Just, so when you say that the common core and the mass core are required subjects, that, and it's saying US History 1 and 2, this is our required subjects, not mass core?
Okay. US History is a mass core required subject.
No, I understand, but not 1 and 2.
Okay, no, what you have in the columns is the courses that we are offering that meet the requirements.
Okay.
So that's how we're meeting the requirement, is with US History 1 and 2.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, just a clarification, inside the parentheses next to each subject.
Yes, sir.
In many cases, you've got, uh, two numbers, sometimes you've got one number. The first number is the actual number of.
Sections.
Sections, courses, not courses, but sections of that course, yes.
Yes.
And the second number is the number of total students involved in all the sections.
Yes, sir.
Where you don't have that second number, what should I conclude?
I didn't put a second number in the required courses.
That was the pattern I thought you were, you were, you were doing, but then, in some cases, there weren't, there wasn't the second number in the second and third column as well.
If there is no number in the second or third column, it means that at this point there were no students enrolled.
Wow.
In the second and third column.
I understand, okay.
So that's a course on our course of studies, but as of this semester, there was no one involved, no one enrolled.
But otherwise, we can take the number of sections, um, as the denominator, and the total students as the numerator, and get the average number of students being taught per section.
Roughly. It's hard to do that, and the other thing that I would caution you on doing that, and Mr. Palladino.
It's not hard to do it, I can do it easily, why shouldn't I do it?
Okay, because, and Mr. Palladino will, I think, back me up on this, it may say, for example, Core English, in the third column first line, eight sections, twenty-seven students.
Okay.
Some of those eight sections meet at the same time in the same room with the same teacher.
There is an odd class, for instance, that has, uh, five different sections with the same teacher during that one period. So the numbers can be deceiving, and also you've got special ed classes that are, that are in there as well, inclusion classes, so you're really gonna be cautious when you look at the sections and divide that by the numbers that are enrolled, it's, it's deceiving.
It is deceiving, you're right.
And I'd also like to remind you that Advisory and Literacy is not a course for credit, it's not a course that teachers teach as part of their roles, and, uh, it's a, it's a very short period that meets every single day.
I know that.
Sometimes people factor that into the average class size.
Understood. Okay. Anything else for Jan on this subject? We will come back, Mike?
Just, Scott, are you gonna be here for the whole meeting?
I can stick around if you'd like.
No, I mean, I just have a question for him, I don't know if he's gonna be here for the whole meeting.
If you could ask me now, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
Just with the number of nights I've been out this week and last week, it would be appreciated.
Go ahead.
All right. I was going, I was, um, watching the WCTV video of your little tour you do for the eighth graders.
Oh, great.
Yeah, it was good.
Great, appreciate that.
And, and there was a thing that really caught my attention, that, I forget who, who, who it was who said it, but there was, um, they said that what's, what's, what's unique at the high school, what's different about the high school as compared to the junior high school, is that every student on an IEP gets academic support.
Correct.
Can you elaborate on that?
Sure, sure. So e- every student beyond maybe an inclusion class or a small group class that they'd be pulled out of based on their disability, has a core academic class. And, um, I think you've heard Chairman Swett talk about, he thought every student should have an IEP, and I think the reason that he was leaning towards that is because we actually have a core academic class, uh, where the teacher works with a student on their deficiencies, on their, uh, if there's work that's owed in a certain class, they u- they utilize power school quite a bit, and they really work individually with that kid, they're the liaison for that student in regards to their individualized education plan, and they really work to push the child and give them the support services that they need so they can be successful in those classes that they might be mainstreamed in or in an inclusion setting.
It, it's, it's a lot of extra help.
It's a ton of extra help.
And, and, and you've seen a lot of success using that?
Huge amount, we'd be in trouble without those core academic classes.
And, and, and it reminds me of when we had the discussion on the MCAS, and, uh, and Chairman Swett was saying, you know, the, uh, among all the, the, the bad news and everything, there are these little gems, you know what I mean? And how, how do we learn from those gems? And it's, it's like, why aren't we doing something like that at the middle school if it's so successful? And that's a question for the, for superintendent, actually.
The answer is resources.
Resources.
We cut nine teachers because we needed to trim our budget by four hundred thousand dollars a year ago.
That, that's, that's the answer, yeah. Thank you.
And I think we're lucky enough that our teachers stepped up a few years ago and agreed to teach an extra course, and, and we're able to keep a program like that intact. It's, you know, it's very tough, and the class sizes are, are okay at this point, but, um, it's more because of our teachers at the school and the schedule, obviously, as well. And I, I don't know much about the middle school schedule as far as that goes.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Okay. Scott, thank you for staying.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, please. Um, Jan, why don't you and Bob come down and also sit here so that we'll be prepared to pass the microphone? Good evening, as we're, oh, good, it's behind us, and it's ready to roll. The district review, for those of you who, um, may have forgotten, we had a visit from the state last February, um, where we had, I believe, five people from the, um, district review office come and visit, interview, um, school committee members, administrators, teachers, um, they visited classrooms, did classroom observations, and they had a group of standards that dealt with what they look at as an effective school district. Um, and of course, they had all of our data that was available from the state, um, and they did a visit of approximately four days, but they were using data from the previous year. So since they were here during February of 2012, the data that they were using was from 2011, 2011, 2012. So that's important, since we are now in the school year 2012, 13. So it's actually, the data is two years old, even though the review, um, happened a year ago. And it took a long time to get this, um, probably in November, they sent us a draft. Um, we read it, we sent back some, um, comments about some mistakes we felt that were made, they corrected some of those items, and we now have the full report. For anyone who was interested at home, um, this can be found on, um, our district website as well as on the Mass Department of Education. And so if you go in and you put Wareham Public Schools District Review 2012, you'll find this document, and it has all the interesting information. Um, I have gone through this, and I'm sure you have as well, there are summary pages that make it a little bit easier, um, that talk about, um, the findings that they had as well as recommendations. And so what I'd like to do is talk about a standard, starting off with leadership and governance, um, talk about the finding, and then talk about the recommendations, and then ask for conversation, comments, um, from the school board before we move to the next one, because this is a rather, um, long, um, and they're all disjointed. So if we can do it one at a time, per section, and then, you know, general comments, of course, at the end, will be welcomed. So, um, starting off, leadership and governance. The school district, it says, should focus on fewer initiatives, implement them more deeply and completely in accordance with a commitment to excellence, and give the highest priority to improving the quality of instruction. I don't think anyone would disagree that the priority needs to be improving the quality of instruction. And as Brian said earlier, what happens in the classroom between the teacher and the student is the most important thing that goes on in this school system. It is difficult to focus on fewer initiatives when the state has been, um, developing initiatives faster than the district, and in fact, as part of our R triple T grant, they mandated that we institute a number of initiatives. And I know many of you remember the document that was sent, that I believe the Taunton School Board sent to the, to the Commissioner of Education on that specific topic, about the number of new initiatives that have been given to districts, and that, from the superintendent's organization, we feel that they are giving us too many things to do, um, to do them very deeply and with a commitment to excellence. We would love to do fewer initiatives. So Wareham has addressed a number of identified needs, adoption of the new mathematics program in kindergarten through grade, grade eight, creation of benchmarks, and benchmark measures in kindergarten through grade eight, the purchase of a database for management and analysis of assessment results, implementation of the RTI program for differentiated instruction, establishment of instructional leader positions at the elementary and middle school levels to increase teacher supervision, creation of two alternative programs for at-risk students in grade seven through twelve, and the establishment of a variety of student support programs. According to the report, although these initiatives are appropriate, timely, and designed to improve student achievement, problems with funding, capacity, meaning the number of people that are available to implement them, planning as well as the inability to resolve differences with the teachers' association have weakened their potential effectiveness. Recommendations on this, to review team recommends that the district focus on fewer initiatives, to implement them more deeply and completely. The team also recommends that the district give the highest priority to improving the quality of instruction. The review team recommends that the superintendent exercise his authority and responsibility to make decisions in the best interests of the entire school community, even when other administrators have perspectives unique to, in this district. And, um, in parentheses, I have Wareham Middle School, um, because what they are talking about is the fact that I allowed the middle school principal to cut the social studies department at the middle school and put in a different program, um, for social studies because we needed to cut those nine teachers. We did not want to cut those teachers, we didn't want to cut the sixteen teachers that were cut last year, but without the resources to keep them, cuts need to be made. And if we ask Mr. Palladino, does he want them done at the high school, he will say no. If we ask our elementary principals, do they want them there, they will say no. But at the end of the day, we have to run the system with the money we have. So on the last recommendation, when we get to it, when it talks about financial support, we have a choice to make that we will be talking about in April, which is whether or not to cut the budget, or whether to go to town meeting, saying we need what we need so that we don't have these continuous problems, because we need to keep cutting programs that we have implemented and begun to find results from. At this time, I'd like to ask the school committee if they have anything about this particular one, and then we'll move on. This is leadership and governance. Yes, thank you. Any comments, concerns, questions?
I have one. So the initiatives that you're talking about, we talk a lot about unfunded mandates, um, but then there are ones, things that we do where we find grant money and we go after them and we do, what would you say is, that this one is really talking about, when it talks about we're doing too many initiatives? Are they, is it a balance between DESI unfunded mandates and the money that we're chasing to do different kinds of initiatives in the district, or is, is it weighted one way or the other?
Every year, um, we analyze the data, we look at the data, and we try to make determinations about what is needed to bring us forward. And I don't know if it was three years ago that we thought there needed to be this differentiated instruction, a tiered instruction system within classrooms, so we then found RTI. It's not a one-year program. It's not a one-year program. It required us to train people, to bring in extra staff, and then to move it up all the way from K all the way to eight. But right now, we've basically stopped at grade six because of funding. Once we got involved with that, it became very evident that we needed a system where we could take the data of common assessments that are given in classrooms and be able to share it with teachers in a timely fashion so that they could discuss what they needed to do, who needed to be in what group, who needed the tiered instruction, so we bought inform. Nobody gave us the money to, you know, we found the money in grants. That's another program that is taking a lot of time to work everything out so that it can be used. Once it gets to the point where it's all in place, we will see the benefits. On top of that, we also have, as I said, with R-T-T, how many different programs are involved?
Race to the Top grant, again, is a grant that was given, is there an option to apply for it? Yes, but not really, because as a Level III district, we're also invited with strings to participate in some of these grants. R-T-T was one of those. It was over $300,000 in its inception, two and a half years ago. There were 32 projects associated with Race to the Top funding. We had to choose approximately eight of those 32 in prescribed areas. We very, I think judiciously, looked at the projects that were listed under Race to the Top and tried to align them with initiatives that we felt would be beneficial to our students. For example, tiered instruction was listed as one of the Race to the Top initiatives or projects, and so it overlapped with what we were doing. The funding didn't equal everything that we needed to truly train and implement tiered instruction. However, with additional grants and special education funds, we were able to do it. So there is some overlap.
Right.
But there is definitely a balancing act.
So let me ask it a different way. The review team, what is the makeup of the review team?
So we had a retired superintendent, I think he was from Attleboro. We had a retired-
So I'm sorry, there are these recommendations, the review team recommends that the district focuses on fewer initiatives. That's the recommendation from not an internal team that looked at this, looked at the recommendations from that group and said, this is what I think we could do. That's their recommendation?
Yes, that's their recommendation.
Okay. And so I think that the question is, we're seeing their recommendations, but what is then the next step after that? Because my question would be, if the recommendation is to focus on fewer initiatives, which do we sit here and go defend those initiatives? Or do we say, you know what, it's a valid point? And then what initiatives are we going to look at scaling back on?
One of the valid points that I found in this report, and it's not in this section, it's in a different section, but it talks about doing a program evaluation, so that when you implement a program like RTI, and we did do some evaluation of it as we implemented about how much we implemented, but after it's in place, you then need to do an evaluation to make sure that it's doing what you thought it was going to do. The best way to do that is to bring in an outside person to do that evaluation. At West Wareham Academy, it's one of the things we have to do, I don't know if it's every year, but we bring in an outside consultant who comes in and evaluates that program for DESI to let them know whether the program is working or not. That is something I think we need to do. We need to take a step back. The district needs to look at all the programs that they have going, do an evaluation of them to determine which ones to continue with, and maybe which ones to move away from. So that's something that I think needs to happen. But again, we need resources for it to occur.
I think it has to be said as well that in the document that Dr. Ravinevich referred to from the Taunton School System, they, in their beginning of listing of initiatives mandated by the state, there were six.
Well, I mean, I think in that goes to my question when it came to funded and unfunding. Like, we have the choice to go after grant money. We choose to do that. And so, you know, I'm not going to, you know, continue, because it's, you know, what kind of evaluation system do we do before we actually apply to it? When it talks about the capacity of the district and all that, and I know, I'm sure that you do some of that, but I don't, it'll take too long to probably go through that dialogue here. But it's also, like, where and for the unfunded mandates from DESI, you know, do we basically say no? You know, do we say-
Just, I think this is sort of a two-edged sword. From the side of looking at programs that we've implemented because we've identified a need. So West Wareham Academy is a good example of that. We went through a very thorough process of looking at why we needed to put that program in place four years ago. Part of the growing pains was to make the adjustments that we had, but this current year and every year, using IDEA money, our grant money, I've hired a consultant to look at different pieces of our school district special ed programs. This year, we had someone look at specifically West Wareham Academy, because we're four years into it, and it's time to say, are we doing the right thing financially, programmatically, student achievement, and to go right down the list. So once we have a program in place, program evaluation is extremely important. Also, for us to take those grants, and Jan and I are involved in this day to day, and that is that there are grants that come out all the time. Our job is to say, what have we identified as the district need, and how do we line those grants up with what we've identified? So two years ago, we agreed that family engagement was a very big part of what we needed to do. There was discussion about parent volunteerism, there was discussion about the need to engage the community in the things that we needed to do. The Beyond School Time program is a good example of that. Beyond School Time program, right now, is funded by six different sources. None of those individually would have funded what we're trying to do with that program. But we needed to be smart about connecting the grant funds with what we needed to do as opposed to chasing grants. I think both of us are very good at not chasing the grants. What we do well, I think, is trying to find the ones that make sense for what we've identified and to stay with those.
Right. And I'll apologize, last thing I want to make is that I agree that that is a great example of something that's still not completely proven yet, but absolutely is something outside of the common, everyday thing that we're doing, and it's a supplemental program for our kids. Get that great example. But what this whole entire recommendation is saying to me is that we have a lot of programs right now that we don't, what they call, not you guys, that we don't need, that we are doing, and we're doing a whole bunch of programs mediocre, and we're not kind of slimming it down to, you know, four or five programs where we're seeing results. And that's the only, that's what I'm seeing here, and that's the reason why for the discussion that I wanted to have some.
If I can, on the second bullet where it says improving the quality of instruction, I believe that's one of the reasons why with the negotiations with the teachers' association, with the implementation becoming an early adopter of the new evaluation system, that this year we are actually fully involved in evaluating our people differently to have a better level of supervision. It's all about the quality of instruction. That's another program that we felt we needed to do. The state changed the rules, so we needed to do it, but we have kind of implemented it in a manner to get what we needed out of it. And we have put the funding into it. We save money because Jan and I are doing the training with it, rather than bringing in a consultant to do it. But there are a lot of irons in the fire, and there have to be because of the needs of the district. And when you have less resources to do what you need to do, and fewer people, then there are more of us involved. All of us wear many hats. So anything else on leadership and governance?
No, I hear what everyone is saying here, and I think the truth is in the middle here. I understand what this team saw. And what this team saw was the stark reality that we really don't have the resources to identify our number-one priorities and go after those number-one priorities in terms of strategies and the funding that's going to be required to make those strategies work. So as a result of that, what we do is, we say, well, you know, we've got this grant out there, we've got this program that we could probably do, we could probably combine this program with that program. And what ends up happening is, in our quest to try to make it work, to try to make things better for our kids, it's very possible that we could have some programs out there that are rendering minimal return. But the same token is, you really have to look at the overall picture in terms of going out and actively seeking this funding and trying to do the best you can when an opportunity knocks at the door. So I think that the truth is in the middle, and there very well could be some programs out there that should be refined, looked at, and maybe even at some point in time, we identify our priorities and set out a uniform plan that might be eliminated. But I think that we would be remiss if we didn't take every opportunity, if there is something out there that fits that we think might solve a problem, not to go after it. So I think there, you know, it's a double-edged sword on this, if you know what I'm saying.
I do have a lot I want to talk about here, but I think I'm going to save most of it for the end, just to tell you where I'm going with this. I found this report to be quite scathing. I think it makes the NEAS report look like a love tap. This is our whole district. And can you back up a slide? It seems to me that this state, not just some group that we, you know, have, a group that we hired to come in to look at our schools, but the state is telling me that our problems can be boiled down to two things: lack of funding and the teachers' union. That's what I took from this. And I'm going to be listening to the discussion as we continue, to see if I'm wrong about that.
I didn't have that reaction.
I didn't either.
But on leadership and governance, first a question to each of you as individuals. Can you think of a program, initiative, whatever you want to call it, that you wish you hadn't initiated, hadn't started, because in the end, it was too much of a diversion for things that were more important? Any of you?
To be honest, I can't. I can't think of one thing that we've worked on that I didn't think was needed. We're usually pretty good about saying no to some things, so.
I think Bob alluded to that. We weed it out. I mean, are there grants out there that offer programs that I wished we could go after? Absolutely. And we don't go after it. Are there programs that we had begun because of a grant that we've ended when the funding ran out? Yes, there are.
That wasn't my question.
But are there programs that we have ended because they weren't proving to be what we had anticipated? At this point, I cannot think of one. Can you, Bob?
I can't think of a program that I concluded that we shouldn't have begun. I think that, I'm going to give you one example. PBIS, or Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, is something that we talked about. At the same time, we talked about starting response intervention, and it happens to be that the Massachusetts model for RTI melds the two of those together, similar framework as RTI. We elected-
PBIS and RTI are similar?
In terms of their framework, in that there's sort of a three-tiered approach to behavioral things as well as academic issues, and they certainly tie together. However, we felt as a cabinet, and we were supported by the administrative team, that there simply was too much to do at one time, that we would not do it well. And so we elected, and with some resistance, I think, from our DSAC folks, to hold off on that. Instruction was really the thing that we needed to attack first, but recognized that there was, and there is in this report, discussion about the need to have school-wide positive behavioral interventions and supports, or school-wide behavioral programs, that are district-wide, so children, there's a universality to it. So that's an example of one that we sort of went against the tide, and I think correctly so. We're now at the point that we are going to put teams together that are ready to roll forward, because now we can do it. But we're doing that much, much more slowly than they would have liked, because we didn't believe that we would do it well.
So the short answer from all of you is no. And the interesting part of that, and I'm going to sound like I'm going to put words in this district of you teams' mouth, but I think if they were sitting there, listening to that, then they would, the only thing they could say is, then you either don't understand your capacity to do things because we don't think you did them well enough. That's the only thing they could say, because they clearly said you did too much. And you disagree, because even in retrospect, you wouldn't have not wanted to do anything. I mean, my off-the-cuff reaction to this was, it was an accusation, you know, you can't walk and chew gum at the same time. And I think that's a little flippant, obviously, but that was their opinion, not mine. And what I'm hearing you say is, everything you initiated, you felt was important. And the interesting thing about the PBI, if I got the acronym right-
PBIS.
PBIS, was that seemed to have resulted in not addressing the suspension issue, which they dinged us for as well. And so that was a capacity issue, which perhaps rightfully, you didn't take that initiative, but we paid a price because you didn't have the capacity. I'm not going to sit here and make any judgment about whether you should or shouldn't have done it. I don't have that capacity to make that judgment. But it's, I think, in this particular case, it's awfully easy to say what a district should and shouldn't do in this theoretical world of unlimited resources. In this particular case, I think resources is a pretty good explanation. When you're busy cutting staff and taking initiatives at the same time, it's awfully, awfully difficult. Nevertheless, your response of no, no, no is interesting, and I really do wonder if they were sitting here, what their response would have been. But let's move on to the next section.
Curriculum and instruction. Wareham should implement a cyclical process for updating and completing its curriculum guides. Increasing academic expectations, especially in mathematics, and differentiating instruction, especially for accelerated students, should be priorities in this process. Recommendations under that particular finding. "The review team recommends that the district follow through on the work it was doing at the time of this review by implementing a review and revision process to ensure that all its students receive instruction based on the latest and highest standards." All of the work that we have been doing, aligning our curriculum over the last two years, really addresses this particular recommendation. "There should be a special focus on assuring high expectations and academic rigor in mathematics. Strengthening the mathematics guide and standards are immediate priorities." Two things, one of the things Jan talked about when she was talking about Mass Core had to do with the pre-AP training that our middle school staff has been going through, as well as the STEM training. We have two teachers that are master teachers going through a program-
At UMass Dartmouth?
At UMass Dartmouth. Also, at the last school committee meeting that I attended, I mentioned the MMSI program, having to do with mass insight, where they will be working with our AP teachers to better the AP instruction. Now, there's a grant, again, another initiative, but after coming and hearing high school principals- principals taken to task because of the AP scores, I felt it was in the district's best interest that we go after that. And even when we were turned down the first year, I sought out the director at a meeting and made sure that we were considered for year two, and now we have been successful to be in that program. So, sometimes, opportunity knocks, and it fits with the need of the district, and you need to go far, and the hope is that that will pay dividends down the road.
Do you want me to speak to him? Specifically on mathematics. Dr. Rabbinovich is going to be sharing with you a chart that I sent him today that shows what we have been doing and what the status is in our continued review and revision of curriculum and curriculum guides. But specifically to look at mathematics, mathematics, as you all know, is a huge need in the district. We had adopted a program about three years ago called Everyday Math for grades K through six, and then expanded it with University of Chicago math program in grades seven and eight. These are aligned with the Common Core standards and with both the standards of practice that increase rigor and expectations. As we've done the review and met with our administrative team, we've learned that the implementation in instruction needed more support. As you know, we put a lot of emphasis on literacy through the RTI program, and again, it goes to capacity and funding. There wasn't sufficient funding to have RTI in both math and literacy, so we had it in literacy, knowing that that was foundational learning. And so, this year, through some attrition of staff and through the availability of a teacher who will soon be retiring but is a math specialist and a math coach previously, we now have a math coach working with our elementary teachers and who is also developing a user-friendly guide for aligning mathematics rigor and expectations of the program with the standards. And she is working in our schools two days a week to support teachers in doing that. I am also working with the high school math department chair in revising those curriculum guides and aligning them with new standards and the rigor that is expected of our students. Once again, we're using grant funds to pay for the training, to pay for the coach, and to supplement materials that we do not have. We're not, I mean, there are not any local funds involved in either of those programs to raise both expectations in rigor and mathematics. And it is, it requires exactly what they're saying, a special focus on instruction in order to bring that about. So, that is a recommendation that has been implemented and is continuing to be implemented.
The second finding under Curriculum and Instruction, Wareham should make engaging, active learning a district priority and create a structure that places primary responsibility for implementing curriculum and instructional supervision on school principals. Throughout the course of this year, Mrs. Rotella and I have visited every school, at least monthly, to go through what principals, ILs, and assistant principals have been doing in the way of instructional supervision. They have been sharing their work with us. We have been discussing it in an open conversation about supervision and about active, engaged learning. And I can say that, more than ever, I think there is a consensus about what good teaching and learning looks like. It is a work in progress as far as writing comments about that to make people understand and give suggestions how people can change, and to make sure that we have unanimity in the way people write these things up. That is something that is in process, and probably will take longer than one year to get to a point where everybody is all on the same page, the way they write these recommendations and so forth. The recommendation for this particular finding, the review team recommends that the district clearly designate the principals as the curricular and instructional leaders of their schools. This will align authority with responsibility in facilitating improvements. The review team recommends that the district enhance supervision to add to teachers' repertoires challenging, innovative practices from its promising professional development training initiatives such as AP and RTI. Do we want to deal with that one before we get to assessment? I think assessment is-
Yes.
We'll treat that as a separate.
Yes. Questions, comments?
Just an observation, I noticed when I read this, it reads just like your recommendation for, you know, converting the curriculum director to the principals, no?
I'm sorry, Mike.
When I read this, it reads just like your own recommendation, to move the curriculum to the principals and not have it centralized.
And we may have different opinions on this, which is fine, because, but in my mind, the principal has to be responsible for what happens in that building. Yes, they get direction from central office, but ultimately, what this is saying is that they have to be the educational leader, not the manager of the school. They need to be in classrooms, they need to be working with teachers, they need to make sure that the curriculum is being implemented in those classrooms, because they are in that building every day. The curriculum director can't be in the building every day, because there are seven buildings. The student service director can't be there every day. But the principal has to be, and by law, that's the person who is responsible. They have to come up with a school improvement plan with their school councils to come present to us. So, yes, I do believe that they are ultimately responsible for what goes on in that building.
And I don't disagree at all with Dr. Rabbinovich. As a former principal, I will tell you, I was an active curriculum and instructional leader in my school. I don't think that you can implement effectively curriculum or effective instruction without the leadership, supervision, and support of the principal, because the principal knows his or her teachers and is involved in the schools. I think what has to be said is that centralized development of curriculum, so that you have a continuum of studies across the district, is essential. Otherwise, what you've created is the hole that, quite frankly, we've been trying to dig out of in the middle school. If you have two elementary schools, each doing their own thing, and not sharing in a common curriculum, in a common continuum of studies, then you're sending to the middle school students with different backgrounds, different foundations, different vocabularies even, and bringing them together, so that you have teachers in that first year in the middle school, and I'm sure, since both of us were middle school principals, we can tell you, it's very hard in the middle school, if you spend your first year in the middle school, trying to bring all of the kids to the same page. So, yes, absolutely, the principals must be curriculum and instructional leaders in the school, but the whole district has to be aligned with a continuum of curriculum and learning, so that you're continuously building and students' achievement is growing, and you're not losing time to get everyone back on the same page.
You say we're having a hard time with that at the middle school. Is that, so is that the case today, that the two elementary schools are that far apart in their curriculum?
I think we're far, we're much closer than we've ever been, and I think we do have common curriculum guides, and we have common program of studies, we have common texts. When I came to the district eight years ago, virtually every school, and sometimes different classrooms, had different textbooks they were using. So, that's, that's, can't continue. So, no, are the school, two elementary schools coming together? They absolutely are, and in fact, that was another reason for bringing in the math coach, was to assist the principals and the teachers in the delivery of the mathematics curriculum.
If you had to put a percentage on it, how far apart are they? How much further do you have to go to get it right?
I don't know that I could put a percentage on it. I can tell you, we are not there yet. I believe that having the principals and the administrative team work together has been essential. The other piece that has proven very effective is approximately six years ago, we began the organization of an instructional leadership team, and that is that team made up of 22 teachers from all grade levels, all schools in the district. And through that instructional leadership team, these teachers bring to that team their concerns and what they question or see as possible discrepancies. And so, now we have teachers who are working as liaisons to support that continuum of curriculum and that unified delivery, so that both the principals as leaders are reinforcing it and enforcing it in their schools, and we have teachers who are bringing it to the team to discuss. So, I think we're definitely making progress. Are we there yet? No. But I have to say, if you put together the work of the instructional leadership team, the work in developing the new aligned online curriculum guides, and I'll be happy at some later meeting to show you what we have available for teachers online 24/7 in the way of curriculum and district curriculum maps. You bring that together with the teacher evaluation system, we literally have the three legs of the stool, because now you're not only providing the aligned curriculum available to all and providing teachers with the training through peer support, but you also have an evaluation system, and you have real support that Dr. Rabbinovich has already spoken of, through our monthly meetings in the schools, to make sure that we can support the principals and they feel empowered to lead both instruction and curriculum in their schools.
I was just looking for a number.
I can't, I'm sorry.
But you said, you said, "Are we there yet?" No. What does that mean?
It means that there are still individual situations where we may have discrepancies in how curriculum is being taught and delivered to our students.
Okay.
Just to be clear, where is the area of disagreement between you and Dr. Rabbinovich?
I think Mr. Flaherty was talking about my recommendation of the budget cutting of there being no directors.
In particular-
No, no, no. You mentioned before you made your comments on this section, that there may be disagreements between you and Mrs. Rotella on this subject.
On the subject of whether or not there needs to be a curriculum director at this particular time.
Oh, that's what you, that's what you were referring to.
That's what I was alluding to, yes.
Okay. Thank you. You all set, Mike?
I guess while we're on it, this is regarding, are we still discussing the rigor, would you say?
Yeah, that's there, yes, absolutely.
Anything involving curriculum or instruction?
Okay. Page 14.
The report.
Yeah, the highlighted item, it's, I'll read it. "In most observed classes, instruction in the Wareham Public Schools was not rigorous, engaging, or student-centered." Now, we talk a lot, you know, I listen to everybody talk at the meetings, and recently, for example, you know, we, in our case of the FinCon, and Mr. Chairman, you know, said, as many of us often do, that many of the parents who are involved and who care, you know, move their kids elsewhere. I've heard similar comments from Mr. and Dr. Sylvia, and I'd say the same thing, about the people who care. And I'm telling you right now, that that confirms and validates every concern that the parents who care, that their kids are not being challenged in the school system. They're not. The state's telling us that, not just some parent, and that's what I'm talking about. Sorry for getting worked up. It's sad.
Well, you know, we can have the debate on whether we're going to decentralize curriculum instruction or whether we're going to, but by state statute, it is the principal's responsibility. By state statute, he is the academic leader of that school, and anything that happens in that school is her, his or her responsibility. But what I find interesting about this particular report, and this is not to cast assertions on the people that prepared the report, because I'm sure they saw what they saw and they reported honestly, but you know, there's a big difference in curriculum when you talk about implementation and design, and design methodologies, and if we're going to hold our principals ultimately responsible for the implementation and/or design of curriculum, then we better damn well make sure that we give them capacity to succeed, if you know what I'm talking about. Because it's, at some point in time, they are not going to have the capacity to observe every teacher, to design curriculum, to implement curriculum, to articulate, to articulate broadly the sequencing of curriculum, and at some point in time, it's all going to fall flat on its face if they don't have the capacity to succeed. So, yes, the buck stops with the principal. I mean, that is, that's state law, but we, as a committee, and we as the policymakers, have got to be sure that we, that we provide our administrators with the capacity to succeed at this task. That's all I have to say.
Yes, go ahead.
It was brought up the last time that we went to the school, we were going through the school improvement plans, and it was by Chairman Swett, who asked the principals, how many of their teachers were on, were going to have an improvement plan? How many of their buildings' teachers were on improvement plans? And it was zero to, you know, maybe a few. I don't even know if there was any. Do you remember if there was any teachers last year?
There were.
Okay. Do you expect, based on this recommendation, or especially the work that's being done by you and Mrs. Rotella in the schools, around, you know, talking with principals about the importance of supervising, you know, supervision in the classroom and providing feedback and guidance, and especially with seeing this report, and I know it was two years ago, but do you see that as a useful tool, and are you encouraging that, again, it's not, it's not a penalty, it is, again, an improvement plan, it's just, here's where I see where you can improve in the classroom? Do you see a rise in the number of improvement plans this year?
Let me answer it in a couple of different ways. The evaluation instrument that was used in, I'm going to say, all school systems, was broken. That's why the state came up and why nationally, as part of the reform, that we have a new way of evaluating people. And part of that was, there wasn't enough time, there wasn't the capacity to come in on a regular basis to have the conversations, the difficult conversations that you need to have to help motivate people to perhaps try different things. Those things are happening now. That's part of what I, we do our monitoring visits. That's, one of the questions we ask is about the difficult conversations that people are having, and in every school we've been to, they have told us about difficult conversations. Now, I can't give you a number, and I can't tell you X percent of people will be on improvement plans. I don't believe in that, because what the teacher is doing and is seen by that supervisor who is there on a regular basis, I mean, that is what will tell. Now, we're, at this point, there, you know, we have a majority of people that are going through a one-year plan, and they have their halfway mark. By the end of the year, we'll have, you know, the evidence, one way or another, where people came in on these things. And will it be different from before? Probably. But again, this is the first year through with this, and sometimes with these, it is not, some people may be working, and I mentioned this to Chairman Swett about, at a conference that I was at, they talked about a Met study that was done by researchers, where they took teachers from Chicago and some other large districts. They took, let's say, 600 teachers, and they made sure there were enough evaluators to go in on a very regular basis. They made sure that the evaluators had a lot- They made sure that the evaluators had a lot of training. They also had people that monitored those people to make sure how they were writing it up and how they were doing their supervision. Much more resources were put into that study than is the norm anywhere. And one of the things they found is that when somebody with something called a value-added, which means that on a test score at the end, that gets added in, at the end of the year exam or whatever, one year a teacher would be rated at the very top. Way above, excellent. The next year, they could be in needs improvement with the same behaviors observed, the same actions observed in that classroom. But what people have not yet understood is that teaching and learning is a very complicated act. It is not simple. And in order for people to accomplish that, Brian talked about it today, about the rapport that teachers have with students. And some people do it much better than others. And have we been trying to help people do it better? Absolutely. But that line between not proficient and proficient, I think before this point, people were given the benefit of the doubt. I think with comfort in this new system, that it is fair and that it is okay for somebody to say, "You need to improve." That it's not the end of the world because there's one extra thing that you need to try to help the students in your class learn more. When that environment exists to have those kind of conversations, I think everyone will benefit from it. Is it going to happen overnight? No. We are in the process and we're ahead of the curve with the rest of the state. But I would put our teachers against the teachers in any other district. Now, you can say, "Well, those districts have better performance." We are a different place and there are other things here that are impacting that performance besides what happens in the classroom between the teacher and the child. So I don't want people to walk away from here thinking that we are blaming the teachers for all of the lack of performance and for the learning that doesn't happen.
And just so you know, I don't know where we got there. Because I wasn't challenging our teachers, I wasn't saying that they weren't doing a good job. I continue to be frustrated that there isn't a documented trail of performance of needing improvement, or that is what I'm talking about. As a person, no matter what career I'm in, I would like to see the trail of where I needed improvement, what I did, what I need improvement going forward. That's what I'm looking for. And that is where, so that's the reason why I called it an improvement plan, call it evaluation, call it, but if it's a post-it note or if it's a conversation, that, I think, doesn't do us any good whatsoever. It's about that documented trail of improvement for even a high-performing teacher. I mean, if somebody says that they're perfect, then I already know that there's something wrong there. So there is always room for improvement. So what is that? And I already know it, we have this evaluation tool, but that's what I was asking for, for, you know, where we see that this year is that documented feedback on improvement. That I'm hoping that when principals, when we talk about this, that principal are going to say, "Yep, you know, of the teachers, this is what we've done, it's documented, and this is where we're going."
There is a documented feedback. And through the one other piece of the evaluation system is going to an online method of feedback. The tool we're using happens to be called Teach Point. In fact, we're training teachers in it on Monday during the early release. We've already provided the training for all of the evaluators. And through Teach Point, not only will that documentation be given to teachers, which it has been all year through a paper trail, that now it is going to be done through emails and everything is stored in Teach Point. So that not only the evaluator, but the teacher as well, will be able to go in and see that documentation of, gee, on this day I was observed and this didn't happen or this did happen. So they will see that trail of recommendations for improvement.
Thanks.
Now, just a point of information, Mr. Chairman. There are other parts of this report that also note expectations and teacher performance. And I think we're a little bit off the mark here because we can comment the teacher performance at that particular point in time. So if we can move on, that'd be great.
I have three quick comments, if Dr. Sylvia will print it.
Josh O.
One is, if there was a curriculum alignment problem in private industry, the CEO would go to the senior staff person and the two line management people, and that would be the team that fixed the problem. It wouldn't have twenty-two people on it. I think we need to sometimes take a lesson from private industry on some things. Because if you're unable to give Mike an answer and it's clearly not a hundred percent, then maybe the team was too large and there wasn't enough, you know, passion and there were too many people involved in it. Secondly, I was, of the entire report, that statement about the lack of rigor engagement and student-centered instruction, that just jumped out at me like a slap in the face. And I felt it, like a slap in the face, because I'm part of this team. And it occurred to me that it was written by educators. And so I can't imagine that they write that statement very often. So it was, it was pretty disturbing to read it. And while I am certain that Mr. Fitzgerald's example of a teacher spinning gold out of rough cloth is true, I'm also certain that there are some teachers that are not capable of doing that. And I find it interesting, and I will not put our student representative on the spot, but I find it interesting that there are, coming in a year or two, student appraisals of their teachers is going to be required by law. And there are a lot of studies that indicate they're pretty astute observers. And I'm pretty certain that Cindy would say that not all of her teachers are equally adept at transferring knowledge and stimulating her and engaging with her, et cetera, et cetera. So to Rhonda's point, this is all about differentiated, not only do we want differentiated instruction, we want differentiation in the evaluation. So that those people that are doing awesome work can get told that and feel really good. And those that are not doing as well need to be supported, corrected, et cetera, et cetera. I won't go on because Dr. Sylvia would like us to move on.
No, we can comment on this, but we can comment further down the road.
If I could just clarify, the instructional leadership team of twenty-two teachers is advisory.
I understand that completely.
When there is a discrepancy-
I'm going to cut you off because I actually agree with Dr. Sylvia. This is taking a long time. Let's move on to the next section.
Assessment. Wareham should continue its efforts to acquire and use technology for data, collection, dissemination, and analysis, and increase time for teachers to meet with specialists for deeper discussions of student performance. Recommendations. The review team encourages Wareham to give priority to upgrading technology in the schools to make the new program accessible and operational. This program will help facilitate analysis of the educational implications of student performance data. The review team encourages the district to collaborate with the Teachers Association to find low-cost ways to increase common planning time for teachers. The, as far as giving priority to upgrading the technology, that is something we have done. We were able this year to begin some of the wireless within the schools so that people using iPads will be able to sync with their Teach Point so that the comments that they write will be uploaded and so forth. But again, we can only do part one of the plan because of funds, because of capacity and resources. And the, as far as the common planning time, I would say to you, that is something that we tried to work on at the last teachers negotiation, for those of you who were on that team. That is something that is needed to continue or the schools need to have some creative scheduling, particularly at the elementary schools, so there is time built in for teachers to be able to meet and discuss the data about student performance for their class and to determine which children need to be in which RTI groups and so forth. So, time, having more time is necessary.
Anything? Why don't you move on?
The second finding for assessment, Wareham should institute a formal evaluation cycle to improve the effectiveness of its programs and services. A representative district data team might conduct this cycle. I already talked about this in my opening and said that I thought this was a very good idea. However, I believe we need an outside person to do that evaluation rather than using a district data team for this particular recommendation.
Quick question. Would this person be challenged to judge whether the program had worked, and also decide if it had not, why it had not? Because the program could be flawed or the implementation could be flawed, and you wouldn't know which.
Most program evaluations look at what you set out as your goal, saying, "This is what we're going to do." And did you do that? And whether or not they'd be able to ascertain why you didn't, I'm not quite sure.
Well, the real question is not so much whether you did it, but did it work? Did it, was it effective?
So the two examples I would use is the coordinated program review, which really addresses both of those things. First of all, is what you're doing working? And if it hasn't continued, if it hasn't worked, why not? And thirdly, really, what are you going to do about it? Because the progress, the progress monitoring of that is year-long and there are dates that things need to be done by. And that's really, to me, the core of it is, what are you going to do about it? And here's the time limit that you have to have it done by. In our own, as I had mentioned earlier, in the, through the IDA grant, I've taken two or three pieces of our program, our special ed program. And the scope of the work for the evaluator has been not only to identify from a financial and programmatic point of view whether we've met our goals, but also if we have not met them, number one, what needs to be done to fix it? Or, number two, what are we going to replace it with?
Okay. Anything? Move on, please.
Human Resources Professional Development. As it aligns its evaluation system with the state's new educator evaluation model, which we have completed, the district should ensure that all educators have meaningful professional practice and student learning goals and consistent, timely feedback and that professional development is aligned with the evaluation system. That is something we have, we're in the middle of. We are doing this now. Recommendation. Taking advantage of the opportunities in the new educator evaluation system will address the areas the review team identified for improvement in the educator evaluation system in use in the district at the time of the team's visit. And as I said, we have implemented the new system. The second finding under Human Resources and Professional Development. The district should work with the Teachers Association to clarify collective bargaining agreement language or its interpretation that has led to confusion as to what feedback may be given to teachers outside of the formal evaluation process. Now, this shows how one confusion can come up with a finding. Those of us that were on the, and I don't know if there were twenty people on it, but the evaluation committee that we worked on for two and a half years to finally get this document done, there was some conflicting ideas about how feedback was supposed to be given. And we had just got the iPads, people were trying to write their comments on the iPads and email them to people. There was some confusion about whether or not the iPads could be reporting the lessons. And it needed to be worked out through the normal grievance arbitration process. It was a meeting, we worked it out, it was not a problem. But that happened to be going on when, last February, when the team was here and they heard it from a couple of people, probably from teachers as well as administrators. And that's why this finding is here. That has been accomplished, the Teach Point that we've talked about. The union is fine with it, we are using it, and there's not a problem any longer. Their recommendation, the review team also recommends that the district develop a framework and protocol for walkthroughs and train all supervisory staff to use it. Evaluators should explicitly use the data gathered from walkthroughs to help teachers develop instructional strategies designed to increase student achievement. That is what's happening during these monitoring sessions when we are sitting with ILs, assistant principals, and principals. Also, through DSAC, there has been special training given to the middle school administrators for a different kind of walkthrough where a group of administrators walk through together and then come back and talk about certain instructional practices that they may not have seen, which then will become targets for professional development for that school. So that's another thing that's in the pipeline. Third finding under Human Resources and Professional Development. The district should prioritize its professional development needs, provide continuous supervision to help teachers implement strategies and methods, and evaluate the professional development program to determine whether the initiatives have improved student achievement. As we were implementing RTI beyond the training, we had a coach come in, sit in teachers' classrooms, meet with them afterwards, giving them coaching. So we have done what this is asking us to do. Bob?
I would just add to that, that at the conclusion of last year, in our first full year of RTI, we also had the consultants that we used, both through Jan's office and my office, come in and meet with us and meet with the ILs in a structured format to say, "Tell us what you see. Tell us where you see our weaknesses and tell us what you see as where we need to go forward." So we sat with the input of four or five of the consultants that had worked with us through the year as a culminating activity and also as a direction for the upcoming year around professional development.
I would also add that we've done the same thing with mathematics. We looked at the data, saw where there was discrepancies as far as student learning and achievement, and also saw where there was discrepancies for fidelity of implementation of the mathematics program. And out of that review of data, that discussion then led to a meeting in the superintendent's office with the two elementary principals and myself. And out of that, hired the math coach who has provided the district maps and guides for implementation of the aligned mathematics program. And now we've gone to the next step since January for her to be in the school. She's in each of the elementary schools one day a week to support the implementation and to improve student achievement in mathematics. And to try to raise the fidelity of implementation of mathematics instruction.
The recommendations under that particular finding. The district can maximize the value of scarce professional development resources by prioritizing needs, fully implementing fewer initiatives, embedding professional development time during the contractual day, and making summer professional development mandatory. I will just say, saying that our teachers have to stay an extra week for professional development is going to cost a sum of money. And without the resources, that isn't going to happen. That is contractual. You know, people work for the days that they are paid and should be. So, you know, I really don't understand where this particular thing is coming from. But summer professional development mandatory. And as well as the cost of subs and taking teachers out of the classroom for the embedded professional development. It is a methodology to use. It is a methodology to use. And in fact, this year, we did narrow our focus. All of, most of our professional development this year has been about the evaluation. And the time we have spent in the schools have been about the, the evaluation. Because we felt that was the lever to move the district. So, I believe we have implemented that as far as focusing it. Making the elementary instructional leaders full-time would help supervise teachers and monitor the effectiveness of district professional development. I agree totally. But you can all remember the combined meeting we had with the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen where we discussed putting in the instructional leaders and the pushback that we got for the instructional leaders. And so, because of the budget, they were only put in halftime. And, you know, on my thing of possible cuts again, is eliminating them because we're not getting the support. So, you know, if we have the money, when we talk in April, I'm going to say to start off with, I'm not in favor of any of the cuts. But if we have to cut, then we'll have to look at every single thing line by line.
Cliff?
It's my turn to get emotional, Mike. This is, this is the thing that kind of bothers me a little bit because, you know, I, I don't know who these folks were that came in and did this district review. They, I'm sure they were well-intentioned. And I, I don't know what their level of expertise was because I've known, you know, administrators that didn't know right from left. But the, the point is that when I looked at this particular section, I, I got a little bit aggravated and I got to be honest with the board. And my aggravation stemmed from several, several different areas. First, the first area is, it just appeared to me that this was a testimonial for the new evaluation system. That somehow, we're going to have an assumption here that by implementing this new evaluation system, everything is going to get fixed and everything is going to be hunky-dory and we're going to have outstanding teachers and the kids are going to be learning in high capacity and everything is going to be wonderful in, in Wareham. Well, I, I have a tendency to be a little bit more cynical than that. But, you know, be that as it may, several, several things that, that I find, you know, that were not hit and some of the things that I personally have a problem with the new evaluation system, and I'm not saying we have to go back and revisit it or not, but I'm going to tell you right now, I'm going to tell you right now, anyone that's going to go on an improvement plan is going to be someone that is not proficient. And where I come from, in my number of years in education, you don't reward somebody for being proficient. The expectation is that everybody's going to be proficient. So, if we want to talk about people being put on improvement plans, then let's put every teacher on an improvement plan. Because every teacher could be on an improvement plan. It's an ongoing thing. And teach, professional educators should be committed to improving their skills on a day-by-day basis. So, if we're going to talk about improvement plans, let's put everybody on an improvement plan. All right? Not just the people that score below proficient. Because I'm going to tell you right now, from where I sit, looking at the plan, working with, working with Teachers 21 Training, all right, looking at the, the state, the state template for the training and so forth, you're going to be pretty, pretty bad not to score proficient. That's just my opinion. So, this idea that this is going to be the panacea to improve education, and I'm not saying it's not going to help, because it probably is. Because, because from where I sit, we didn't do enough evaluation. We didn't learn in the classrooms enough. So, this is going to force to have dialogue about teaching and learning. But this idea, and I see it on several of these slides, that this is going to be the panacea and it's going to cure all our problems, I'm a little bit more cynical than that. The other thing it didn't cover was a culture of high expectations. Every single solitary inner-city school that has had success is because they have worked on the culture of high expectations. And I'm talking about high expectations for the community, high expectations for parents, high expectations for students, particularly students, and high expectations for the staff. All right? You, you start with building a culture of high expectations. You know, we can go around the peripheral and we can, we can talk about programs and we can talk about the grants and we can talk about RTI. We can talk about all these things. Until we commit, until we commit as a system to a culture of high expectations, we're going to be having these conversations when I'm dead and gone. So, this, this is, this is the part that really aggravated me. You know, we want to pigeonhole. We want to pigeonhole the administrators. We want to pigeonhole the, the teachers. We want to pigeonhole the parents. We want to pigeonhole the economic condition of the, of the city, of the town. We want to pigeonhole the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee for not allocating the resources. We want to pigeonhole everything. You know, if you really come right down to it, it's not that difficult. All right? We've got to put our resources and put our efforts in developing a culture of high expectations. So, so all this is all well and good, but as far as I'm concerned, in terms of the evaluation system, every single solitary educator and administrator in this system should be put on an ed plan, an improvement plan. Because it's an ongoing process. And if you're committed to being a quality educator, you're committed to personal improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. It's interesting that it says that we should make full-time instructional leaders. Would you say that, would you infer from this report that the way the instructional leaders have been implemented has been effective, according to these folks?
Their effectiveness has been limited because they have two jobs to do rather than just one.
Yeah. I'm going to read from the second paragraph of page 10. The whole paragraph is relevant, but I'm just going to read the last few sentences. "The incidence in the district classes observed by the review team of the techniques and strategies commonly associated with high-quality instruction was low. This suggests that teacher supervision has not been effective and that teacher evaluation also has not resulted in improvements to instructional skills. The supervision and evaluation of principals and other administrators by the superintendent also appeared not to focus on improving professional practice and student performance." That's, that's pretty, pretty damning. I'd say, in my opinion, what I infer from this whole, this whole paragraph is that blame whoever you want, whatever you want, lack of funding, whoever's, you know, is, is, is doing it. But the way, the, the way that this is working today in Wareham, the instructional leaders has been a colossal waste. I'm sorry, that's the only way I can look at it, based on this.
I just want to point out that when the review team was here, the instructional leaders were not evaluating teachers.
They were not what?
They were not evaluating teachers. When the review team was here, the instructional leaders had just begun their training to observe teachers. They were not evaluating teachers last year.
So, who was?
The principals and assistant principals.
So, that would, well, then that system was a colossal waste.
Well, they didn't have the capacity to do it, Mike.
Well, blame whatever you want. It just, it didn't work. Back to the, you had said, you had said that there was a misunderstanding, I guess, with the way feedback was given for the, you know, the, the teachers and the technology and informality and such. It, it was mentioned in another place, too, that that really caught my attention. It says about how, dealing with the, the Teachers Association. It says, "Conflicting interpretations of the collective bargaining agreement and differences about issues requiring negotiation between district leadership and Teachers Association have sometimes been a barrier to implementation, implementation of district initiatives. For example, the principal told the, principals told the review team that Teachers Association had not agreed to allow them to determine the purpose of the weekly after-school meeting time for elementary teachers." So, I take from that, the principal wants to have this after-school meeting and the, the Teachers Union says, "You can't tell us what, you're not allowed to tell us what the subject's going to be?"
The thing I believe they are talking about in that particular, this was after we implemented a new contract. And for the first time, we had taken, elementary teachers up until last year were able to basically leave 15 minutes after the children each day. What we were able to do during negotiations is to take two or three of those days, put them together, so there is one long meeting day, 45 minutes after school, to work on curriculum work and so forth. There was a, as, when you have new contract language, there was a disagreement about the meaning of some language, about on the other days, what could happen with that time? Whether or not they could be group meetings or individual meetings and so forth. That has been worked out and is no longer an issue.
To Dr. Sylvia's point about having this culture of high expectations, I'm reminded of when the principal of the Deacon School was at the all-day budget meeting. And she, and she, and she, she was going on about how her school was particularly impacted with the, with the, with the layoffs because she had the newest teachers. And the newest teachers are the first ones to go. And she made, she said in no uncertain terms that those teachers were higher quality than the ones that we're replaced with. Do you remember this? You do? How is that putting kids first? How is that all about the learning? And I'm just, I'm saying that rhetorically to anyone who wants to answer it.
I know. I wish I could answer the question.
You know? And, 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 and what gets me is, this didn't happen alone. I mean, the Teachers Union didn't just say, "We're going to have these rules." I mean, someone else agreed to them. Did this body not agree to that and somehow figured that was a good idea to, to, to have a system that institutes mediocrity? How do you do that? I need an answer. Someone needs to tell me that.
It's about negotiated seniority. That's what it's about.
Well, it's supposed to be about, it's supposed to be about the learning.
Absolutely.
Right? That's what we're here for. That's why, that's why Brian was telling us, "You know what? This sign needs to be over there pointing at us, not at the audience."
You all set, Mike?
I'm done.
So, the only thing I'd say is, when looking at what was put together for this slide is that it does go back and say again about how we need to prioritize and look at fully implementing fewer initiatives. And so, it's, it's not a, I don't think it's a question, but the question that was asked before, teach one of you about which programs that, you know, would you, looking back, not implement? And, you know, completely respect, you know, across the board, we felt that they were necessary at the time. But have you received feedback from teachers or principals about programs or services that, of course, everybody's going to say, "I don't want more work and I don't want," you know, I get all of that. But, you know, have we, I know that I would ask my, my team, you know, and then debate it, but have we debated ever any programs? Would they say something different?
That discussion has come up in the instructional leadership team. And there's two answers that come up. And I think it goes back to the double-edged sword that Bob mentioned earlier. In some areas, they wish there were more programs, but they know there isn't the funding. The biggest wish that I hear is, why do we have to implement new common core state standards, new assessment systems, and new evaluation systems? Because the, the students' assessments are also changing, all in the same two years. So, they're feeling overwhelmed. But these are mandated initiatives.
Right. But one of the things that I've heard, and I could be completely off, is that it's not that implementing those three systems, is that in those three categories, what they're implementing has changed. So, you know, you, I'm just going to use evaluation system, even though I know it's not a good example. All right? We're going to implement a new evaluation system and this is what it looks like. So, everybody get ready and this is what we're going to do. Up, they changed it. Now we have to do this. Up, they changed it. So, again, the evaluation is the wrong, the wrong example. But it, I'm seeing confusion on the, on the face. So, so if, you know, in the past, there hasn't been this changing of what is being implemented underneath learning or curriculum at all.
I don't believe it's changed. It has been phased in and maybe that's where it's interpreted as change.
I think, I think one of the comments that I, I know one of the comments I hear and I think one of the comments that most of us hear is, is not that, that they are in disagreement, and I'm, they, meaning the principals or the, the teachers, not in disagreement about what we're trying to do. It's, it's how do you get it done? They believe firmly that they need more common planning time. I mean, I don't think, I don't think anybody would disagree with that. They feel that there simply is not enough time in the day to be able to do the things that we are directing them. And I believe they agree is the right stuff to do, but they don't feel that they have sufficient time to do that. That would be the, the, the one thing that I think that they wouldn't be in disagreement with us about. But, but what they get frustrated with is, we get it, we understand it, but when or how? That's what I hear most.
And there's no contracted enough time.
Correct. Correct. Could I just make one other comment, too? And I don't want to be off the mark, but I think we've talked a lot about the evaluation instrument and, and I, and I have not been directly involved with that large group of folks. But I think that we talk about the evaluation instrument both as a diagnostic tool and a prescriptive tool. And I think we just need to be careful about that, that it really is predominantly a diagnostic tool. It is to design, it is designed to be able to say, here's what we are seeing that is not sufficient. And it doesn't, it doesn't go deeply into the prescriptive part of it that a, an improvement plan might do. So, I, I just think that people have to remember that, that, that an evaluation tool like the one we have is more diagnostic than it is prescriptive. It gives us the, here's what's wrong. It doesn't necessarily give us the, here's what to do about it. And I think they are two different discussions.
I thank you very much for that point. So, then, if we're just talking about an evaluation tool and it doesn't do the prescriptive part, which is every individual needs to know, you can tell me all what, what's wrong all you want, but how do I improve it? Then does the evaluation tool fail?
No. I, I think that that's private. Barry, would you mind going back to the previous slide? Only because making the elementary instructional leaders full-time would help supervise teachers and monitor the effectiveness of district professional development. I, if I got to do it, I would add to that and, and provide the prescriptive piece to this. This is about, here's what's wrong in that classroom. I do believe that most teachers want to change and will take the direction and will take the support. It's a question of, once you've identified it through the evaluation tool, that's one of the ways, that statement is one of the ways to be able to move forward and say, "Okay, here's how we're going to measure whether you're making the effective changes that we're prescribing to you based on the outcomes of that evaluation."
As Bob has said, I mean, the, the evaluation tool includes a diagnostic of what is observed. It does include recommendations. I mean, that is part of the new law, that no teacher can, can be given a rating of needs improvement or unsatisfactory without recommendations as to how to improve. The second step of those recommendations, which I think is what you're getting to, is where do you implement professional development, monitor it, and make sure that those recommendations are implemented?
Okay. The, so I understand the principals were doing, doing the evaluations, not the instructional leaders during the time of this, correct?
Correct.
The instructional leaders are doing it now as we speak?
Yes.
Yes, with assistant principals.
Okay. And would you say there is improvement in that area from when the principals were doing it?
There's much more feedback and there's more meeting with the teachers in a supervisory role.
So, to my colleague, Mr. Flaherty's comment of a colossal waste, which I'm not sure I agree with, but I do understand his frustration, the elimination of the instructional leaders sends us back to that colossal waste. Am I correct in that assumption?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I make three more points? I know I had my time, but I won't, I won't be emotional. And I'm glad Mr. Sullivan is here because as a, past pre-
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Fitzgerald, I meant. What did I say? Sullivan?
Yeah, you said Sullivan.
I'm close. I'm sorry. Mr. Fitzgerald is here and he, and as a past president of the union and also on the Board of Directors for about the entire time that I was here in Wareham, I don't sense that there is, you know, a, a gap in terms of knowing what we have to do and trying to come up with common ground in order to get it done. But I will say this, and it's only because of, it was my personal philosophy of being a professional educator. I'm getting a little, I'm getting a little sick and tired of hearing, "We don't have time for common planning." Make the time. You make the time. You don't, you don't run out the door at 2:00. You don't run out the door at 5:00, about three minutes after, after 3:00. You make the time. A professional person, a professional educator- A professional person, a professional educator, makes the time to work with his colleagues, to work with the grade level areas, work with curriculum areas, in terms of what they can do together to sharpen their skills. So, I'm getting a little tired about not having common planning time, because back when I broke into this a gazillion years ago, there was no common planning time, but there sure as hell was an expectation that I was gonna be able to collaborate and plan my lessons with my colleagues. So, in terms of this common planning time, yeah, we need common planning time, and yeah, it would be nice if we provided it during the day, but you know what? If they want it, they can do it. So, that's, I guess, my anti-union stance on that. But my pro-union stance on it is, I absolutely positively agree, and I think they would agree with me, the union would agree with me, that there has to be a negotiation about infused professional development. There has to be a way in which you can get professional development on an ongoing basis with a very narrow focus to be infused into the day or the week or however you wanna negotiate it. And I don't think that that would be an impossible thing to negotiate in terms of hours or manipulating the day or manipulating the schedule or whatever you have to do to provide ongoing infused professional development on a very, very narrow focus. And there was one more thing. Oh, the role of the instructional leaders. I have been the one that's been the most outspoken or being over-administered in Wareham. Anyone that's been attending the school committee meetings know that I'm the guy that said, "No, no more administration. We've got enough administration. We're over-administered here and we're over-administered there." And last year, where I voted against the budget, I didn't vote against the ILs, because I honestly believe that if we're gonna get into the classrooms and have honest, meaningful dialogue about good teaching and good learning, we have to provide the means to do it. And to expect one principal to be able to do that is being unreasonable. So, in my opinion, yeah, we need the instructional leaders. And I think that if they're just solely dedicated to improving teaching and learning, you know, working with their colleagues in improving their skills, being an impartial set of eyes to be critical, not necessarily in a negative way, but a critical eye on the lesson or the teaching technique that I think a lot can come from it. So, I was against all those budget cuts and everything else, but I did not vote against the instructional leaders, because I think that at this point in time, particularly in light of the fact that we've got a new evaluation system, that we need the capacity to make this work. Thank you.
Point of origin, Mr. Chair. I think at this time, we might need a motion at 9:55, seeing how we're into this with five agenda items still to go, to go past the hour of 10:00.
So, move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying, 5:00? Thank you, Ken. Just two quick points. If we eliminate the instructional leaders, we might as well eliminate the evaluation system.
Absolutely.
It will not be possible to do an effective job. It will delegitimize our attempt to put in the state mandated evaluation system, and perhaps even more importantly, it will eliminate all of those incredibly positive discussions that are occurring between those individuals and teachers, especially young teachers, which may be the difference in keeping them in the profession and not, and having them leave the profession. So, there isn't anything, to me, more important to the quality of instruction and the quality of the teaching and learning that occurs than those kind of discussions, so we just can't do it. Secondly, I drew the conclusion, perhaps erroneously, but they made one point, the review team made one point in their findings, when they said, "The district's professional development team is varied and needs-based, but has had little observable impact on teaching and learning." I read that, and I thought, basically, how the hell do you know?
Exactly.
I mean, it was, it almost demonstrated a bias, which I have a problem with, you know. So, I tend to ignore statements that I don't think have any legitimate basis for being made, and I was dismayed that they undermined their own, the quality of their review by making such a statement. It's unfortunate. Let's move on, please.
Student services. The Wareham Public Schools should make it a priority to review and evaluate current suspension policies and practices and develop a plan to reduce suspensions. One subject of attention should be whether the district should adopt a new positive behavioral program, and as Bob mentioned a little while ago, with PBIS, we decided to put that off until after the implementation of RTI. There is a group of people now working together through the wraparound grant, I believe, that they are planning for the future implementation of a PBIS system, Positive Behavioral Intervention System.
And Supports.
And Supports. Thank you. Another acronym for our vocabulary. Student support. The district should undertake a thorough data-driven review of its current model of special education services to determine its overall effectiveness and subsequently initiate, redesign, or discontinue specific programs or services based on an analysis of this data. The recommendations from the team. The review team recommends that the district undertake a comprehensive, data-driven evaluation of its present special ed programs and services to determine their overall effectiveness and identify specific areas where further attention and enhancements may be needed. The district should consider using the services of an external consultant, as it did in 2010 during its CPR implementation initiative, to facilitate and support systematic review and analysis processes. That is on student support. And comments, please.
Anything?
Just one thing. Do they give any specifics here? I mean, it's nice to be able to say that you need to evaluate your business and cut out programs. It's just such a blanket statement of evaluate your business and cut out what's not working. Okey-dokey. But for this one specifically-
Did you say okey-dokey?
Sure did. I might say it again. So, did they provide any, I mean, during the, I don't know, it was a while ago, but even during the interview process, or do you know where this came from?
I don't know where it came from, and they did have copies of each year since, maybe not the first year I was here, but certainly the second. I think we were too busy with the CPR, which was extensive in and of itself. I've had an external consultant, and we've identified as the team chairs, the supervisor of special education, the principals, and myself, the areas that we wanted to evaluate with the money that we had. So, in the IDEA grant, put a certain amount of money aside, hire a consultant, and have them look at those areas. So, an example would be, the CPR found or believed that one of our substantially separate programs at Minnetonka was outside of the mainstream of the school. So, we had, through both the school council and through an outside evaluator, take a look at the location of that program based on what we were told in the CPR. They had those reports. We've had them for four years now. Not that that's the only answer there should be, but another item that they had that they didn't seem to respond to was our continuum of services. Every year, we look at, by disability type and by age, where we have holes in the service or where we've needed to be able to make changes. So, again, in one of our external evaluators' eyes, we needed to focus more on our secondary, our transitional kids, the kids who are 18 to 22 years of age and have some specific programming for that. We went through a review process, and we did hire, two years ago, a person to fill that position for purposes of transitional planning for our more disabled kids. So, that was a long answer, too. I honestly don't have, okay, this is what they were talking about, and my rebuttal is that I do believe that we've done that, certainly open to doing it in a better way, but I think I had more examples of what we have done than the zero that we had for what they gave us is.
Right, and the last thing I'll say about this, I mean, that's where it, one of the things that I liked when, after the evaluation that was done, or the, what was it, the high school?
NEAS.
NEAS.
Yes, the NEAS report, is that afterwards, what happened was is that the high school put together a recommendation committee, and what they did was they took every single recommendation, and they broke it down, and they said, "Here's what we're going to do for improvement." And, you know, I think generally, the presentation that I've seen today is that we, you know, this was in 2012, this is what we're doing, so probably if they came back and evaluated us, they wouldn't have that recommendation anymore. Or there's been kind of defending a statement that they've made or just blank, you know, saying, what are they talking about there? So, my question is that where, and I know we're not at the end yet, but especially about this one, what are we doing next with this? Are we, you know, are you diving in, and, you know, the people that they talk to, are you asking that question? Like, what are we doing to work on some of the recommendations that we feel are valid?
One of the things that we've done, but I have to tell you, it's not as a result of this, it was really a result of the CPR, was a very good thing that came out of the coordinated program review. They had asked that we improve our internal evaluation or assessment or monitoring of how we're doing with certain pieces that were identified through the CPR process that we were weaker on. So, for example, if it appeared that we were not providing parents with, I'll just use an example of sufficient parental rights during team evaluations, that we, their direction to us, "They," meaning the Department of Education's, direction to us was, create a corrective action to solve that. Our corrective action in that case was to create an internal team, have them review so many folders about once a quarter, and look at the notes that would reflect whether parents were being provided their rights during team meetings. So, that was an internal process that we used as a result of that. I can't tell you that I can wrap my hands around something that they said that says, okay, you know, let's create another process. It would be very familiar for us to do that, to find a corrective action. That's what the CPR is built around. So, those are the things that we've done in the past. It just happens to not be as a result of this process on this particular-
And I appreciate that, and I think the question is more about the evaluation as a whole, and I know that I asked my question at this and probably should've waited until the end, so I'm done right now, and I might ask it again and say, okey-dokey.
Just a quick point. All these suspensions, we've invested a lot in the high school with the deans. They're effective in the sense that we're suspending a lot of kids, but that's not one of the ways that I would like to measure effectiveness. Do you, I guess I'm mostly asking the superintendent, do you have any concerns at all that this is, that this is the best use of dollars? Is it almost like putting a lot of cops looking for speeders, and the more cops you put out, the more speeders you find?
When we implement programs like the deans, that came about because when we did the previous search for the high school principal, what we heard from faculty and from parents is that there were concerns relative to behavior, to safety issues. So, we found a way to address that, and that means if there's somebody that has a behavior that is not positive to the educational climate, there are consequences.
But why should we have a disproportionate number of kids with behavior that's inappropriate to the educational environment?
Part of that goes to the need for the PBIS system that needs to start at an elementary level and work its way through the entire system, so students are conditioned to this positive reinforcement of correct behavior, as well as, and nobody has said it yet, or maybe somebody has, but the learning, as well as the behavior, isn't just accomplished at school. The first teachers are the parents at home. So, it's the home, it's the community, it's the school together that have to solve these issues, not the school by itself.
Okay, thank you. Next subject, please. I'm sorry, Cliff.
I just wanna say a couple of things. Again, I don't know who these folks were, I don't know what their level of expertise was, but I find it interesting that, you know, we've had the coordinated program review, a whole lot of them, that was very, very specific as to the recommendations and how that was going to affect programs or have a programmatic effect, and they specifically say, "External consultants." Well, the coordinated program review is external consultants. Unless one of these guys is an external consultant, it wants to get paid. But, you know, we've been through the review, and we've gone through reviews, and, you know, again, it's a part of the report that I didn't quite understand exactly where they were coming from, so that's all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Financial and asset management. The school committee should work with town officials to ensure that they have an agreement on municipal expenditures in support of schools that accords with state guidance and regulations. It should also work with the town to establish structures that will allow increased communication and understanding on both sides. The school committee and administration should use these structures to present a clear picture of district needs.
All right, here's where I get to say it. Okey-dokey.
We've done our part.
We'll do that. Thanks.
Let's not get into that.
Michelle, do you need any guidance on the spelling of okey-dokey?
No. I'm sorry, I won't say it again.
No, but I agree with you on that. I mean, it's like, hello? Go ahead.
That's a good recommendation.
Yep. Great, very good.
I applaud that.
So be it.
Three communication challenges have been hindrances to ensuring the financial support for education is appropriate. Turnover in town positions, which have compromised financial forecasting and planning. A strained relationship between the school committee and the selectmen, which has compromised negotiations on funding for the district, and the school committee's advocacy for the schools, which has not always been strong and effective enough to make district and student needs clear and compelling. As every town has to balance the needs of each department, effective communication about the needs of the school district is important to provide public confidence that funding is appropriately allocated.
No comment.
No comment.
I'm not gonna take any comments.
No, it's just a waste. It's just a waste, no.
I'm sorry, I agree-
You insist?
Yes, I agree with some of that. I think that it's the same thing as we're sitting here talking about teachers and administrators that we all can do better. We can take a look at this and say, absolutely, we can do a better job at this. So, I see it as, you know, they came in here, they talked to town administrators, they, you know, and this is what they came up with, we can do a better job.
Good.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
In my time in the superintendent's office, I've had four of five town administrators, I believe six different town counties. So, the ability to develop cohesiveness in planning for the future, and, I mean, I believe, and Mr. Swet can correct me, because he's sat in a couple of meetings recently, but the current town administrator has been the most upfront, is communicating back and forth for hearing our needs and trying to be cooperative. It's the first time a town administrator has said that he will put in the budget for the books for a bond issue. It is not the school department coming forward with an article, it's the town administrator asking for borrowing the $400,000 to get us our books and technology. It is not the school department coming forward with an article, it's the town administrator asking for borrowing the $400,000 to get us our books and technology. I believe that is progress. Hard fought, you know, we went through a lot with other people, but we're here and I want to acknowledge it, that I think things are getting better. And there is an election on April 2nd that may also affect the town.
Well, and I, no. And so, along that lines, and I agree with you, and I think that's the why, why it's important when we talk about doing better, letting what has happened in the past go, looking at those positive behaviors and embracing them. And trying to create, using that and catapult it into additional ways to create a stronger bond, a stronger relationship. So, that's when I'm reading this, that's what I'm saying, because I'm seeing the same positive things that you are, and so how can we take that and use it to, you know, continue it and to make it stronger?
I agree with Rhonda, if it's positive, let's get out there and shout from the top of town hall that it's positive, that things are getting better, and I absolutely agree with you, and that plays into that third bullet. And I do agree with that third bullet. I honestly don't think that we have done a good enough job about telling the folks out there that the funding for Wareham Public Schools is insufficient. I don't think we as a committee has done a good enough job in convincing people that we're not wasting money, that we are committed to doing the best we can to provide the best possible opportunities for our kids. It's not perfect, but we're working at it. We've got a bunch of committed people that donate a tremendous amount of time on the school committee to make sure that that happens. I don't know if we've been out there shouting loud enough of exactly what it is we're doing, and we probably haven't been shouting loud enough on our accomplishments. You know, on the folks that are doing well and going to college and finishing school and, and doing well in academic competitions and AP tests and whatever. So, yeah, I probably do agree with the third bullet, we could probably do a better job about expanding on what is happening in our district and also making the public believe, because there's a certain degree of cynicism out there that for whatever reason, we've got all of this money and we're just wasting it. So, probably bullet number three is, is good, and in terms of bullet number two, so be it, if it's getting better, you know, and that's a good thing. But, you know, I've always thought that, you know, it's, we've always made an attempt to be cooperative, you know, the bottom line is, we have been so cooperative that the school, the school department has never supported going into town meeting without a balanced budget. Now, from where I sit, that's cooperation. So, if it's getting better, absolutely, I'm all for it. So, let's, let's shout it aloud and say, it's getting better and we're signing up for it.
If you shout, who's listening?
Oh, I don't know.
Well, I just want to give credit because I do think that we have been saying, I've sat in meeting after meeting like everyone else and listened to the superintendent talk about cuts and things like that. Every year we've had to make cuts and that message has been relayed to the public, I think, over and over by, by our superintendent. I don't, I don't know how much more we can do, so I'm not sure I agree with comments on bullet number three, I think we're doing our due diligence for whatever funds that we have. You can only do so much, but I do think that we have been getting the message out, and the town just, the town, meaning all the voters, just seem to have priorities in a different place.
A lot of them don't believe us though, Kenny.
The only thing I'll say is, if the measure of effectiveness is whether we got the job done, then we've been ineffective, because we'd like to have a lot more resources than we have. On the other hand, there's no question we would have been more effective if we didn't have other town leaders over the course of the last number of years loudly proclaiming the opposite. And that creates confusion on the part of the citizenry, and that means that things don't happen. I think, I agree with our superintendent, I think for the first time, we have an absence of personal agendas, we have a lot of integrity, we have a lot of goodwill and good faith, and I'm optimistic. It's too bad we don't have as much money as we have good faith, but I'll save that for the report later in the, in the, in the meeting. Anything else?
Just I concur, the one word I'm hearing that I haven't heard in a long time is trust, and that says a lot.
As a concluding statement from this, I agree with Mike's statement and with some of your statements about the shocking nature of some of these comments, about the disturbing nature of some of these comments. But I think where we go from here is that this is a starting point. I think now that you have this information, this is something that should be given to the new administration when they come in, and some of the planning and maybe some of the questions that are generated for the interviews should come into solutions for some of these issues. So, even though this was not timely, the data was from two years ago, the visit was a year ago, I think it can be used. Any data that you have can be used to help a process, and so we now have this and we need to work on it as you move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As soon as you can get up here, we'll move on to gifts.
He shouldn't.
Thank you both.
You want to go on to another agenda item?
No, Jen can handle the shutdown, right?
I'm sorry.
Are you?
I kind of shut that.
I can shut this down, go right ahead.
Tell us you have a gift for $1.8 million, please.
Nice.
However, there are some nice gifts. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that we accept a gift of $1,500 from Mrs. Patricia Wild towards the Global Education Cape Verdean Trip.
Outstanding.
A movie, accept the gift from Mrs. Wild.
Second.
Any discussion, and many thanks, the Wilds continue to be generous.
She's a nice lady.
Yes, very nice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstained, five zero zero.
Thank you, Patty.
I recommend that we accept a $700 gift from Target to support the Mine at Forest Grade Two Field Trip to the Zeitarian Theater.
A movie, accept the gift for the Zeitarian Trip.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstained, five zero zero.
Thank you.
We, there is, every year I come before you with these gifts about flags. The Franklin Flags Company has an Adopt a School Flagpole program, and he has been able to get donors to donate flags for most of our schools. So, starting down, we have Duncan Donuts of Wareham is donating a flag to Wareham Middle School. Longhorn Steakhouse is giving a flag to West Wareham Academy. Community Mini Storage is donating a flag to Wareham High School. Music of the Bay is donating a flag to East Wareham School. The Wareham Barber Shop is donating a flag to the John W. Deacon School. And Cool Cone is donating a flag to the Wareham Cooperative Junior/Senior High School. And we are in need of an additional sponsor for a flag for the Mine at Forest School. So, that, just as a way of advertisement. So, I'd like you to accept these flags from the Franklin Flag Company through these donors that I have mentioned.
Accept the donation of the flags by the Franklin Flag Company.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstained, five zero zero.
I'd just like to add, I mean, it really did my heart good to see this, this really made my day when I saw this, thanks.
We ready for the next?
Oh, is that it?
Yep.
Okay. Rhonda, I'm sorry, superintendent's report.
Okay, and I don't know if you want to fold this in with those minutes, but it's up to you, so.
Why don't you go through the report and then we'll take the minutes.
So, under the first item, I was aware that in my absence at our last meeting, there was a conversation here about my budget cutting recommendations that I made before the Finance Committee. And in order to better understand the total educational costs of these cuts and any money from the budget, I am proposing a line-by-line discussion of the budget at our April 10th meeting. Personally, I'm not in favor of any of the cuts to our budget because I believe we need the money that we need, but I'm willing to go line by line with you. And so, we can actually see if we take $80,000 from this account, what does that mean? And we will have, my idea is to have a panel so that I have all the administrators next to me as we go through this, and if we decide I'm going to take, for the sake of argument, $100,000 from a high school, Mr. Palladino will tell you what that's going to cost. So that we hear it and we have an open and full conversation about it with the entire board. For the, I don't know how many years we've been going through this, but the board wants to have a say in what stays and what goes, and so that's why I'm offering this as an opportunity for that meeting.
Mike?
Just, just to be clear, when you say you're not in favor of any of the cuts, like where's your starting point? Because we had 1.7, we have $607,000, where are you at right now?
No, I'm saying that we need the whole $1,700,000. The only thing that I would say is the $400,000 that Derek has put into his budget as far as a bond, yes, I think we can eliminate that. But the other $1,300,000 we need, and if we cut administration, if we cut teachers, if we cut ILs, if we cut other activities, they all have costs. And I want to make sure that we're all on the same page with that before we go to town meeting and either support the items that are in the budget or.
A combination of the two.
That's right. I mean, if there's a, if somebody's offering an amendment that is lower, we need, as the board, we need to know what those, what it's going to cost us.
Or, or, or I'm not ready to assume that we have to make all of those cuts.
Neither am I, I'm just saying, we need to go through it, to discuss it, we don't, you know, whether the board feels they want to have a vote before town meeting or not, that's part of the conversation, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate for me to say that I will not be here on the 10th?
Unfortunately, yes.
And as I mentioned to you last week, if you could have moved the meeting to the third, I am available, but I will not and cannot be here on the 10th.
Unfortunately, that's the only meeting we have in April.
That's right, so move it to the third.
I, I mentioned that to the superintendent and he was concerned about the, the amount of time we would have between meetings if we moved it to the third.
Whatever.
I hear you.
I'm just telling them, it'll probably be a short meeting because I won't be here.
Leave it at the 10th then.
No, but I mean, I would like to have a conversation about that, if I could, but whatever.
All right, I hear you.
Yes.
This is going to be part of our regular meeting, correct?
Yes.
And we were expected to take votes of some sort at the, regarding the whole budget line items and cuts, if any. I was wondering, would it be more appropriate to have that discussion as part of a workshop before?
Well, you raise a good point because.
Then Cliff could probably make it.
The third is, leaves a huge gap between the next meeting, the 10th is not a good day for Dr. Sylvia, and I for one would love to have him there, no matter how long the meeting goes. The 17th is school vacation week, the 24th is already scheduled for the search committee, long meeting associated with the, the search committee semifinalist process. And, and if you try to do it during another day of the week, you almost inevitably lose somebody.
And town meeting starts the 22nd, so we have to get it done before.
Exactly, so I am more than open to a Saturday morning workshop, that's obviously very inconvenient for the administration, but if, if, if people can come together behind that, I'm more than willing to do that, but I.
I can do the third, but I wouldn't be available on a Saturday.
That's, that's the problem.
I would, I would think that a weekday would be more convenient to most people, no? Than a Saturday?
I tell you what, we've got, we've got one more meeting before, another meeting in March, correct? If people could give me their availability by weekday evening, I will see if I can come up with a date where we can all be present. Because I, there's no point in having some of us there because then it's the same problem we're trying to avoid with the 10th.
But see, I don't understand your reluctance to schedule on the third, because it's, I mean, it's only seven days, it's only seven days difference and.
You could make it on the third.
You can make the regular meeting on the third, people could make it. I don't understand what this gap has to do with it.
You had reluctance.
No, I'm fine for the third.
No, I know you're personally fine, but you expressed a concern that we have such a huge gap between meetings.
I, we could do both meetings.
We could do both meetings.
Have the workshop on the third and then.
That's, that's where I was going, have a workshop, then do the votes.
So, that's the only thing on that agenda.
Exactly.
I think that's a constructive suggestion.
It's 35 pages long, I mean, it's going to take a while.
Fine, is everybody in agreement on that?
For the third or does it have a workshop?
The third will be essentially the workshop, it's still open.
And we still have a meeting on the 10th.
And we'll still have a meeting on the 10th.
For any business.
For any business. Does anybody have any problem with that?
I don't think so.
No, thank you, that'd be great, I appreciate that.
We can do the votes on the third also if there are any.
If there are any, yes, exactly.
Okay, consider that done, Michelle, you got that?
Can we do the votes if it's a workshop?
Yes.
We can.
Well, you'd have to put it on the agenda.
It has to be on the agenda.
Okay.
But we're not absolutely sure we're going to have votes.
Okay.
But even if you confirmed the number that you have.
Well, that's, that was, that was the point of the workshop, to just kind of speak kind of informally so that you can have a public discussion and then you vote on it later, you know, formally.
Well, we can decide at that meeting whether, I think this committee is pretty confident when it comes to when a vote moves them, they take it, so it's a discussion and then.
Okay, I think we're all set then.
Thank you, I appreciate it, I'd like to thank the committee for it too.
No problem, glad, glad we came to that resolution. Minutes of February 27?
All right, thank you, I asked for this to be tabled till, till this part of the meeting. I don't have, I don't have Dr. Rabinevich's comments in front of me at the moment, but to, I'll say that what I read looked like something that I would have written if I were in his shoes, and he seemed pretty miffed that, that the meeting went the way it went. And what I'm getting at is the second portion, the, the second item on the agenda, discussion, this is, this is, this is how the notice read. Discussion of Educational Vision as a School Committee. Okay, educational vision.
Let me, let me shorten this for you.
Okay.
I actually agree with you.
Okay.
It was not, what was, the beginning portion that lasted far too long was intended to set the stage for why we needed to revise the vision because we no longer apparently had the resources to implement the strategic plan. Instead, what happened, it went on and on, and then Ken had to leave, and I didn't want to get into a vision discussion without all of us present. So, in my mind, we're going to essentially be extending that to the 10th, well, the third now, the third, so I agree with you.
All right, so all I'd like to see on these minutes, I mean, the discussion took place, that needs to be reflected, but I don't think the votes are appropriate or in order, so I'd like to have the votes stricken.
I don't know if we can even do that, I don't care one way or the other, Cliff.
I don't think that's appropriate, because these are the minutes as they happened, and we have to have a record. They are, Mike, these are the, these are the minutes as they happened, this is what happened. However, what we can do after we approve these minutes, and I would recommend that we do, I voted in the affirmative on those actions. Because I voted on the affirmative on those actions, I can vote to reconsider those actions, rescind, reconsider those actions and bring it up for a vote on the third. But you can't alter these minutes, these minutes are what they are.
I agree with you.
Okay.
Well, we can rescind them, and that will go into these...
And I will vote to reconsider the votes, the budgetary votes of that meeting.
On the 3rd?
On, on the 3rd.
Fine. Okay, with that, are there any additions or corrections? I just have one, down near the bottom of the first...
I did too, yeah.
Go ahead.
Page, it says, and Michelle, it says genetic, and it should be generic.
Okay.
Looks like something where the word, word decided to create the word for you. Anybody have anything else, Mike?
Just on one of those votes, I think the, the, the second page, on the vote, on, on the, on the vote on the bottom, it says vote, yea, three, nay, and then there's no number.
Oh, okay.
There should be a number there. Okay, and that's it.
Okay, move to approve as amended.
So...
Second? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to have the votes taken on February 27. To combine the town position and the Director of Finance to be reconsidered on April 3rd. I would also ask to reconsider the vote not to recruit Assistant Superintendent, also to be discussed on April 3rd.
Fine.
So I'd like to reconsider both of those votes at this particular time.
Michelle, would you put those on the agenda, please?
Does he need a second? Does he need a second?
I don't think we need a motion.
Yeah, but you need a motion to reconsider.
Yes, but then you'll make those on the 3rd.
Yeah, we need a second to reconsider the motion.
Yes, but that second will occur on the 3rd, not tonight.
No, tonight. You just, you need a second to reconsider these two votes, on the 3rd.
I don't...
Michelle's can stop your debate.
You're just asking to put them on the agenda, and at that point, you would reconsider them. Unless you're making a motion now...
No, okay, yes. I, I would, I would make a motion to reconsider these two items on the April 3rd.
You don't have to do that.
No, we'll just put them on there.
And, and why can't he do it now?
Because then you're going to have to go discuss, and then you're going to decide if you're going to vote again. You're not discussing it tonight.
But I, but I am, I am making a motion to reconsider a vote. I'm making a motion to reconsider a vote.
Right, and I'm ruling it out of order.
Then you can't take it up on the 3rd.
Sure you can.
No, you can't.
Why?
Because it's already been voted. It's already part of the record. We've already voted these two things.
Yes, we did, and we can also vote to reconsider.
Not unless, not unless someone makes a motion, and it passes for reconsideration.
And you'll do that on the 3rd.
No, I'll do that right now. You can't do it on the 3rd. Oh, I suppose you could do it on the 3rd, yes. Yeah, you could do it, I'm sorry, you could do it on the 3rd, yes. But it still needs a motion.
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Agreed.
All right. Gotcha.
But it's in the notes on this one that we're going to reconsider them on the 3rd.
Exactly, so we don't forget.
I'm going to, I'm going to miss you on the 10th.
Can you all say what your report?
I, yeah, thank you.
Test your blood.
Rhonda, superintendent's search.
This is great, because you guys won't debate me, it's so late.
Don't count on that.
I'm joking. You already have this, right?
Yeah, you did, somewhere.
So, this is, at our last meeting, what I said was that I would come up with, I would come up with a list of the makeup of what the screening committee could be. We did vote, we didn't vote on it, right?
Nope.
No, you had a consensus of a tentative agreement.
Okay, all right, so what you have in front of you is a suggested makeup of a screening committee. There was debate and discussion last time, having students on it, not, you know, how many students, as well as administrators and back and forth. This is just the recommendation that I came up with. I'm happy to take feedback or suggestions, but right now, it is a thirteen-member committee, which I think is manageable. Before, I think that we had eleven, so this is thirteen. And what I did was I put members that are appointed, which is what the Board of Selectmen is doing, what the FinCom is doing, what the school committee did. And then I did, we did have discussion whether we should go ahead and appoint the school committee member as chair and moderator, or unless we should have the committee do that. I have made a recommendation, just because of all the work that's been put into this, and when you look down at the screening committee responsibilities, that, again, having the person that's been part of it as chair, doesn't mean that I'm going to dictate it, but just putting the person that's most knowledgeable in that, that position. And then the last thing is, so I think that it's important that, but Michelle can correct me if I'm wrong, that we vote after discussion on the makeup of the screening committee, and then I'm going to ask how those members that are not appointed, how they get chosen for the committee, because we are going to be asking that they submit a letter of interest. And so whether those members are chosen by the appointed screening committee members, or if they should be reviewed and voted on by the school committee. So, I'll take the first part, which is discussion on the makeup of the screening committee.
Okay, let's get a motion on the table, and then we can discuss it after a second. And I have a motion to approve the makeup of the screening committee as listed.
So moved for discussion.
Yep. Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I would just add that I've had feedback, I don't know why people come to me about it, but they've had feedback that they're very upset that there's only one union representative on here, where we have multiple unions, it's just the, the union president, I guess, of, I guess, the Teachers Association. So, someone had articulated that they were very upset that there weren't more union representation there. I don't know if I agree or disagree with that, but they, they said that in the past, there's been more union representation for such committees.
So the one thing that I'll say about it is that it's, it's one of the reasons why I did add to Wareham pool, public school staff. I didn't say teachers, I didn't say, I said Wareham Public School Staff, because then you can have two more members that, you know, again, with their letter of interest, where they're going to talk about their background, and the reason why they need to be on it. You know, they can, they can state that I'm a union rep, and I represent this, and I think it's important to have this group represented on there. That's the reason why I added two members of the, of Wareham Public School Staff.
Okay, so I will tell this person to, to express interest, or have, so have other people in other unions express interest, who happen to be school staff, and note that on their interest, letter of interest.
Yep.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I've always said that committees get too large, it's unproductive. I think thirteen members is way too large. I'd be comfortable with nine, never mind adding other positions, though. I, I just, I can't support thirteen members.
So do you have a recommendation of what you would cut?
I don't know what I would cut, but I, I would cut four...
Well, that doesn't help me.
I would cut four, I would cut four, four people out of that thirteen-member committee is, I, I don't see, I don't see the need for a committee that large. I would say, I mean, I, I would look at business rep, nonprofit, and, and maybe... That would bring it down to eleven, maybe two of the citizens that large, or something like that. But I just, I can't support thirteen members.
So can I just make one point about that, through you, Mr. Chair? Kenny, so the one thing, the reason why, I'm just going to say that I'm, I care about fair and thorough representation on this committee. I mean, that's, that's one of the reasons why to have the thirteen in the recommendation that I'm making. The other reason is because of the, the activities that the search screening committee will actually do. So, I agree with you, it was thirteen members, and I had, and it was all about opinions, about opinions on the search firm, and that, like, if there were several different things that I needed to get consensus on from this committee, then there's no way that it would be this big. But because the screening committee is going to be, is a, is a body that is going to be an interviewing body during the process, and then provide structured feedback through a, a document that Ray and Associates is going to provide to us. And the only other thing that I'm asking them to do is to provide input into the interview questions. Those are the two things that this body is, and I think that it can be managed with thirteen. And that's, again, if, if, if the committee feels like there's over-representation on here from different groups, then absolutely, let, let's take a look at that, but when it comes up to an unmanageable group with the activities that they're doing, I think it can be managed with thirteen members. It's just my feedback.
So, we'll just say we have an agreement to disagree.
Yes, absolutely. I just wanted to give you that background of the reason why.
Cliff, you all set?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Mike?
Yeah, just real quick, how, did Ray and Associates have any input into how this list evolved?
No.
No.
Okay, just, just curious.
Yeah, and I think it's a good point, and I can pass it by them. It wasn't, it was not too far off from what the committee originally, and they have seen that list. And I think that they're, what they care more about are the activities of that committee than they do the makeup, but I'm happy to, to pass it by them.
I, I don't think we have the time for that, do we? No, maybe, this has to get done.
Yep.
Yeah, so.
But again, everything that they have talked about, what had, more had to do with what would the activity, what would the committee do, not so much of who you have on it.
Yeah.
I, I actually agree with Ken, in terms of it's too big for my liking, but I would eliminate different positions. So, therefore, I'm just going to go, I'm perfectly happy going with what's here, because I don't think we can ever agree on which positions to cut, so.
Do you want to try it, or no?
No, I, I think it's a, it's a waste of time to, to go through that process, because it's not as important as just getting this done. So we've got a motion on the table, and a second. I'll call for a vote, and hopefully we can get a majority and move on. All those in favor of the list as, as presented?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Any extensions? Four, one, zero. Okay. Four is still yours.
Okay, so then the second vote that I would ask from the committee is that the not-appointed members will be submitting a letter of interest. And I guess I'll ask for a motion that, that the appointed, or that the vote, I guess I don't have an opinion one way or the other, so that, decided by vote of appointing screening committee member or vote of a committee. And this would mean that, once we get the letter of interest, that, that this group would then review the letter of interest, and then decide if there are, you know, four people that have expressed interest, and they're going to represent the business community, then we have to, we have to choose one. So, is it the appointed members of this committee, or is it the school committee?
Discussion?
So it'll be these five appointed?
Yes.
These five appointed people would be the appointing authority, if it wasn't the school committee, correct?
Exactly. There's only two choices, I mean, I don't want to do it by myself, so.
I, I'm perfectly content letting them, the people they're going to have to work with, let the appointed people make the decision.
Anybody else have any comments? Mike?
Well, two of the five of the appointed committee is the executive arm of the town.
Actually, three.
Would you include the FinCom in that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
You bring up a very good point.
That's, that's a little too much for me. I mean, it's, it's, it's the school committee, you know, not the town committee.
I already voted, I already voted on it.
Excuse me?
You already voted on that, so you shouldn't be...
No, no, it has to do with...
This is the second vote.
Down the bottom? Who picks?
Who picks the...
Who picks those people that are going to give letters?
The eight, eight remaining members.
So the other option is to, what, have the school committee pick?
Yes.
But I, I, I would prefer that.
I'll change my opinion.
Okay, I, I, I just want to get this done. Fine, I, you want to make that into a motion?
Uh, so moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Well, and Michelle, it's...
Any further discussion?
It is ten forty-six, can you tell me what you move to?
We move to have the school committee decide on those eight people, based on the letters of interest submitted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero, school committee will determine. Do you have an idea as to when that will occur, Rhonda?
I'm going to send an email out to them tomorrow or the next day.
So, the next meeting, perhaps?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, the first thing that I have to do is I have to get this out to all of the papers, and on the blogs, and on the website, to basically let people know that we are, I do have some letter of intent, but I will get it out there, so I would say that it could happen in the next week or so.
So at our next meeting, we could, we could make the decision.
Yeah, so...
Okay, good. Next.
That's it. The last one is the Wareham Screening Committee will commit to a time, I mean, do you want me to read these? I sent it up front. All right, so are there any concerns? Rushing, everybody took their time, and then it's like, so the Wareham, so everyone received this before. Is there anything that you would like me to take off this list, or anything that I'm missing when it comes to the, the screening committee, and Ray and Associates, this is their directive.
You did a hell of a job.
Thanks. All right, so the next step is to ask for letters of intent, and I'm going to ask for those to be in by March 21st.
Any concerns, thoughts, questions?
Thank you, everyone.
Great, thank you. No, I agree with Mike, he was being facetious, I'm not.
It did?
I know you did.
That's where they come from.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, okay. I'm going to quickly go down through these budget negotiation comments. I'm sure Dr. Rabinevich will interject as he sees fit, and I would, hopefully he would, to augment as necessary. These are my notes from the meeting with the town administrator, Alan Slaven, who was sitting in for Steve Holmes, Barry, myself, Pat Murphy, and Anna were also, were also present. There was an agreement on the following. Neither the town nor the school are overspending.
Point of order?
Yes.
Just describe who Pat Murphy is for the people at home.
Would you call him an intern, a business, school business manager intern? Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Sure.
There was also agreement that the FY14 budget request by Upper Cape Voc Tech is a serious problem. To be specific, it's a half a million dollar increase from this year to next year. I can tell you there was an agreement on the part of the town administrator to contact his counterparts in Marion Falmouth Born and Sandwich to discuss that budget. I have contacted all of my counterparts, the chairs of the school committees. I've already gotten one positive response. I have gotten no negative responses, so I'm hopeful that we can gather everybody together, and I have encouraged the FinCom Chair and Vice Chair to also do the same as well, so we'll see. At his own, on his own initiative, the town administrator has decided to take any of the increase from this year to next year requested by the Upper Cape Administration, and put it in reserve and to level fund Upper Cape. He realizes that that will take cooperation from the other towns, but he feels as strongly as our Dr. Sylvia did last year, and town meeting approved, that level funding is appropriate, as long as our school committee is being asked to be level funded as well. It's, it's a statement more than it is necessarily a savings, but we'll see, only time will tell. But a half a million dollars could be extremely well spent by this school district. And there was also agreement that because neither the town nor the school are overspending, that this is a revenue problem as compared to a spending problem, i.e. additional revenue is required. It was also agreement that the unity of town school leaders and, and this is important, a long-term plan to generate more revenue will be required to gain support for more tax revenue from citizens. To paraphrase what I just said, if we're going to ask that a contingent budget, for example, be passed by town meeting, and that an override be considered by the citizens, the feeling was that not only will the town leaders have to be unified, town leaders meeting, Board of Selectmen, school committee, town administrator, superintendent, Finance Committee, we all need to be unified, but we also need to present to the citizens a plan that says, we think we can generate more additional revenue from business and other sources, not just by additional taxes from our citizens. And so, the development of that plan, of course, is primarily the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen, but Mr. Slaven was in agreement that this was something that should and could be done. And over the course of the next six weeks, we'll see, is it six weeks? Yeah, something like that. We'll see... Yeah, something like that, we'll see what happens. There was agreement that the transportation budget was much approved with the three-tier option that was developed by our Superintendent and the Transportation Manager. I realize we have not voted on that, and we have not had a full detailed presentation, but the, the, there's all sorts of evidence that this, this is a good plan, and that it can work with minimal impact, and in fact, some positive impact, especially with the consolidation of, of fifth grade into the middle school. The Chapter 70 issue is still looming. The good news, bad news is that we got so little increase out of Chapter 70 for FY14, that the amount they might take away may also be very little, as compared to other schools that actually got a windfall, and they may lose that windfall. So, only time will tell, the next set of numbers, hopefully will come before Town Meeting, and they usually are the, the House Ways and Means Committee, or the, the House Ways and Means Committee. But as to when that will come out, nobody knows. And finally, and this is really critically important, I think it's fair to say that we did not commit to being, to, to an agreement to go into Town Meeting necessarily with a balanced budget. We basically said we were going to go through this agonizing, and that's my term, agonizing process now on April 3rd, to see exactly what is theoretically possible to cut, and still have a school system about which we can be proud. If we don't get to, to, if we don't find $680,000 in addition to the cuts that have already been listed, we may be going into Town Meeting with a $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 problem for Town Meeting to solve. I made no commitments, and I'm sure you wouldn't have wanted me to make any commitments, about getting to zero. That's a tough situation for the Town Administrator to be in, but that's, to me, that was the only honest thing I could say to him. Did I leave anything out, Barry?
No, and I think there was an understanding that that may occur, that, that in fact, we may come out without a balanced budget.
Right. So, having said that, I will open it for questions.
Was there an understanding that level funding, the School Department this year brings us, still brings us back to 2012 levels?
Oh, yes.
There was an understanding to that?
Oh, yes, they, they understand that what they're asking us to do is impossible. I believe somebody said that.
Yeah, I mean, the amount of good faith, goodwill, trust, integrity in that room-
That's good.
-was so much higher than we had been used to over the years. It was refreshing, as much as it was, the numbers were depressing, but the attitude was refreshing, and-
That is extremely positive.
It's extremely positive, I, you know, it, it should give every citizen encouragement that even though we are short in revenue, we're not short on spirit, and passion, and goodwill, and that is worth a tremendous amount when you're trying to solve a problem. Anything else?
I'd like to thank you for your effort.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Did I hear a second?